Good evening. Welcome to the March 10th North Hampton School Committee meeting. I'm Mayor Gina Louise Sharra and I'm the Chair of the School Committee. This meeting is being held remotely on Zoom pursuant to the modification of the state's open meeting law for COVID, for the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting and all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. I'll begin by asking the Clerk to please call the role of the School Committee.
Mayor Skira.
Present.
Member Robbins.
Yes.
Member Gazy. I see you, but you're muted. Member Seraphie Cox. Member Seraphie Cox, I know you're here or you were here.
The.
All, all, go, keep going.
She just shut up. Hold on. There you go.
There she is.
I can't hear you, though. No.
Um. Member Stein.
Um.
Oh, there he is. He's here.
Where?
Member Stein, can you hear me?
Oh, wait, hold on. Can you unmute?
Now I can unmute. I'm present.
Okay. Member Levy.
Stein needs to be made a co-host.
I think I just did. Member Levy?
Present.
Member Miller. Okay, she can unmute. I think I have to make her a co-host.
Present.
Okay. Member Goldman.
Present.
Member Agna.
Present.
Member Davis. Um, I'm not sure we have Member Davis yet.
Not seen.
Well, Your Honor, you do have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will now open up public comment. If you wish to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature in the bottom menu bar under reactions. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're having trouble raising your hand, you may use the chat feature to send a message to me, but that's the only thing that chat will be used for and only during public comment. Before you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. I will set a three-minute timer to ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak. I ask that all but the School Committee turn off your video until called upon. Only the person recognized has the floor. So we will start with Jonathan Brody, please.
Thank you. Um, really appreciate the opportunity to talk. I think I talked a couple months ago. Um, and I get really nervous here. It's funny, I get less nervous if I'm having to talk to people in person, so I'm actually going to pin the mayor's, uh, video feed because, Mayor, I know you, I feel comfortable with you, and I can get some, some sort of feedback. Um, but, you know, of course, I know, you know, others, other people have heard me talk. Of course, I know Counselor Seraphie Cox, um, Counselor Miller, and Counselor Gazy, and, and I'm somewhat familiar with the rest of you. But I, I'm coming to talk with you about what I have come to talk to this group of people with historically, and will continue to come to talk with this group of people about until we ideally can come to some sort of resolution. And that's about a critical issue related to the budget. Dr. Provost and the budget that he presented clearly outlines an issue Bridge Street school families have been working to address for years, if not decades now. And that issue is in regards to inequity around the building-based budget funding. Uh, Dr. Provost shows in his budget the disparity back in 2014 in regards to building-based budgets, um, that they were not equal. He's working for them to be equal now and to work towards equity in the future, as he says. I have requested through Counselor Seraphie Cox that we get the building-based budgets for the last 13 years to get a fuller accounting of the financial landscape and the extent of the inequity. I find this critical, and I think 13 years is just the start. To be honest, it was a little difficult to listen to the extended dialogue about Counselor Stein and the use of the term first and second-class learners last week, when it appears that as a district, we have first and second-class tiers of educational funding. And to think that those tiers of educational funding are disproportionately impacting our school that educates the most, the highest number of the most vulnerable students is extraordinarily concerning. I have said this before, I say it now, and I will continue to say it until this body fully addresses the issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next is Will Bangs.
Great, thank you. First question is, I, I'm here reading the letter on behalf of the sixth-grade team, and another member, Sarah Churchill Windsor, is wondering if she can cede her three minutes to me as well.
Um, yes, that's fine if you want to do that.
Great, thank you. Hi, everybody. My name is Will Bangs. I'm a sixth-grade teacher at JFK. I live in Belcher Town, but I've been teaching in North Hampton for years. So I'm here for you, I'm here tonight to read a collective letter on behalf of the sixth-grade teachers at JFK. "The sixth-grade teachers at JFK learned of the change to the structure of the sixth-grade teams after the team leader and department chair meeting on Monday, February 28th. At this meeting, the proposed budget was shared, and it was noticed by the teachers present that a position was being eliminated from the sixth-grade team, and that the team would be restructured from three teams to two for the 22-23 school year. We have serious concerns about this plan, and we're surprised to see it include in the proposed budget. At a meeting with Principal Caldwell earlier this winter, the sixth-grade teachers shared concerns about this change, and we were told that it would not be implemented for the 22-23 school year. We were also surprised that the proposed budget eliminates JFK's teaching staff, the sixth-grade position, and the two part-time reading positions that work directly with students, and adds two instructional coaches who would not have direct contact with students. Now that we know that these changes have been officially included in next year's budget, we'd like to share how these changes will impact student learning at JFK. When the sixth grade originally moved from elementary schools to the middle school, it was under the condition that there be three teams and a dedicated reading class for each student. This was intentional and allowed for smaller class sizes, maintain a lower students-to-staff ratio, created a more gradual increase in the number of adults that students would come into contact with in a school year, and included a homeroom period that allowed for, allowed students for a successful transition on a daily basis from home to school. About 14 years ago, an additional special education teacher was added to each grade level to ensure that there was one special education teacher dedicated to each team in the building. That four-person team plus a dedicated ESP made for a total of five professionals, working with approximately 70-75 students each school year. The proposed budget would eliminate one of the sixth-grade general education teachers. This would increase class sizes, and with the move to two teams, there would be eight sections of each class, for example, four science classes per team, as opposed to the current nine sections, three science classes per team. This change would increase the class sizes by an average of three students. With a larger cohort, it would bring class sizes to 25 or more students, and this would have a huge impact on students at a time when they need more support and attention from their teachers as they recover from lost instructional time and increased social-emotional needs as a result of the pandemic. The number of students per team would also increase, which would leave each teacher, each teacher assigned an additional 25 to 33 students each year, depending on the cohort size. The close connections and bonds would be harder to form as teachers' caseloads would grow, leaving less time to focus on individual students. The team of teachers would also increase from five to six adults, meaning there would need to be more coordination and collaboration to ensure students are supported with clear and consistent expectations and support across all settings. This change has not been communicated directly to the sixth-grade team, so it's hard to predict what other challenges will come up. We are unsure if we will be included in the planning for this change and if our concerns will be considered and addressed. We feel that this change does not account for the big transition from elementary to middle school and is being made in a time when students and teachers are already challenged by pandemic circumstances. We feel the change will not be well organized or implemented, given all the other demands our staff and administrators have this, have at this time, and will result in adverse conditions for our students, adverse outcomes for our students. We feel that the community has not been adequately informed, and we will not support the change to the sixth-grade staffing and services. Our students need a plan that does not eliminate teachers that work directly with students and maintains the current class and team sizes to met, best meet student needs. And this is a collective letter, as I mentioned, that's signed on behalf of the sixth-grade teachers. And in the letter that was emailed out to all of you earlier this week, it also includes a grid down at the bottom with a breakdown, a very specific breakdown of the enlarged class sizes from this year's cohort to next year's cohort if this plan were to move forward. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. So that was also Sarah Churchill Windsor's time? Is that, yes?
Correct.
So should I put down her hand or?
Yeah, I believe so.
All right, when I get to her, I'll just check in with her, but thank you. Um, okay, next is Adrian Stowe.
Hi. Uh, hi. So I've just come over from the Board of Health meeting, and it's quite clear that the Board of Health is about to vote to lift the citywide indoor mask mandate. Uh, Northham, Amherst Board of Health just voted at the same time, just now. I, I've just been informed to, to lift the citywide mandate, and the Amherst schools are going to follow the, from what I understand, the Amherst schools are, are following the Board of Health in Amherst. So I know that the, that the school mask mandate is not on the agenda for today's meeting, but is on the agenda for two weeks from now, but I want to encourage, I, I, I don't know the bylaws, but I want to encourage, if possible, that the committee vote today on the school mask mandate. It is a strange, and one might say absurd, position that the City of North Hampton will lift the mask mandate for all adults, and the only people in North Hampton who will be masked for the next two weeks will be those people who are least at risk of any serious health outcomes from COVID and who are most harmed by wearing masks in schools. Um, the idea that young children are not harmed by wearing masks in schools, I think, is obviously absurd on its face, especially for children who have speech delays or who are struggling to read or who are hearing-impaired or who have autism diagnosis or any other developmental delay. Um, we are doing damage to these kids every day that we keep this mandate in place, and there is no rationale at this point for keeping it in place. The City Board of Health, as I said, is, I believe, as we speak, lifting the mandate for the city, and I want to encourage the board right now to vote to lift the mandate for the schools. Again, I don't know the rules here, but I believe that the, that you probably have the authority to put it on the agenda for tonight. Um, I want to, in, in the strongest possible terms, encourage you to do so. Um, I think that's the responsible thing to do. I think that as elected officials in the City of North Hampton, it's really what you, what you really must do. It is what you must do. Um, it is, it is, uh, it's, it's unconscionable that we're still doing this in the current environment. Um, so, um, that's, that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stacy Dakey. Stacy? Can you unmute?
There we go. Okay, it wasn't working.
Here, so, in here.
Okay, great. Um, thank you, Mayor, and School Committee members. My name's Stacy Dakey, and I'm a resident of North Hampton. I'm a parent of two fifth-grade graders at Bridge Street School, and I'm speaking tonight about a portion of the, the newly proposed budget, specifically the proposal to transition, transition the sixth grade at JFK from three to two teams. And I guess I'm still trying to understand it all, but I guess this involves moving from nine sections or home. And I guess I'm still trying to understand it all, but I guess this involves moving from nine sections or homerooms to eight sections or homerooms, which sounds more palatable and more like a minor change, but I wholeheartedly disagree that this will be a minor change to this group of kids. And I looked at Dr. Provost's presentation to the School Committee a few weeks ago, and it appears, based on that presentation, that elementary school students are showing some recovery in both math and reading levels, but have not yet caught up with the pre-pandemic levels. And I could also see, based on the Sabres screener, that it shows low levels of students at risk in grades K through five. The Sabres information is honestly completely contrary to what my personal experiences for this cohort. I'm just, you know, talking to lots of parents who have kids in the current fifth grade who are really struggling and flailing, and this could be due to stresses of the pandemic, oncoming adolescents, or any number of other things, but there's, there's, there's just a lot going on with this group. This particular cohort has been through a lot, a lot of adversity in their elementary school experience. The situation the current budget proposal brings me right back to is the implementation of the so-called WINS model, which was implemented when this, the fifth grade cohort was in first grade. And I can speak to our experience, or at least my experience at Bridge Street School. It was pretty disastrous that year. And there was chaos in the classrooms. About a third of the entire BSS first grade left either mid-year or at the end of the year. At the end of first grade. The changes were eventually made after many meetings and grievances from parents and caregivers, but I feel like this is what happens when resources, when resource changes are implemented without prop, or when changes are implemented without the proper resources. This cohort then had a full year of in-person school, two years of interrupted school, and then here we are in fifth grade. In addition, the current, in addition, the current fifth grade group has a higher percentage of students identified with a disability than the current sixth grade class, and the current fifth grade is larger than the current sixth grade. With all these factors, this particular cohort of kids urgently needs as much academic and social emotional support as possible. Is that me?
Yeah, that's time. Can you?
Okay, so I understand there are budget constraints, but I would implore you to try to find other ways to, to save on the budget than changing the sixth grade around. This, this group desperately needs as many adults and trusted teachers that they can get.
Thank you. Next is Carl Mead.
Yes, hello, can you hear me? Thank you. Good evening. My name is Carl Mead. I live at 58 Northeast Street in Amherst. I am an English teacher at Northampton High School and chair for the department, but I would like to make clear that tonight I'm only speaking on my own behalf, not anyone else's, not the department, not department chairs, just myself. I have four things that I would like to say this evening. First, I would like to thank the School Committee for taking time at your last meeting to discuss the brief and unpremeditated insinuation that NHS in any way positions its students as first or second class. As someone who was genuinely offended by that remark, I appreciate both the apology itself and the discussion that led to all members voting for the apology. Second, in that discussion, committee members questioned why department chairs would go to the press rather than discuss the matter with the individual committee member who made that remark in private. In effect, why publicly shame for what was publicly said? I reject this idea altogether. It is an idea of entitlement to status, power, and position that does not belong in a democratic body that believes in equity and public accountability. Third, in the discussion leading to the apology, the remark "people make mistakes" came up a few times. Yes, people make mistakes, but it matters which mistakes a person makes. It says a lot about a person just which swear they resort to in a moment of frustration. Likewise, the off-the-cuff speech may be understandably indelicate, but those more coarse remarks may reveal unconscious viewpoints and values, and when those moments arise, they are worth discussing. Lastly, a month ago today, the School Committee voted to approve the NHS program of studies. In that meeting, committee members made comments that indicated a lack of understanding of how things work at the high school in general and regarding the math department's embedded honors programs in particular. It is my understanding that in the months since that meeting, the number of School Committee members who reached out to the math department for clarification was zero. Thank you for your time. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you. Next is Jen Lucine.
Hey there, everyone. I'm Jen Lucine, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Jackson Street School. I live in East Hampton, and tonight I'm speaking to you all on behalf of the entire kindergarten district team. First of all, my solidarity to the sixth grade team for also speaking on behalf of their team. What kindergarten must have talked to you about similarly is the proposed budget cuts. We are all concerned about an item on the superintendent's budget proposal. That's the elimination of the first grade ESP position, and we oppose you cutting this position and urge you to reconsider this item. The first grade ESP position was created out of need prior to the pandemic, and at that time, a few years ago, the district recognized that our first grade students needed additional educational and emotional support in their first grade classrooms. And now, a few years later, still in the midst of this pandemic, their proposal to cut the position is short-sighted. The need of these young students, both academic and social, are even greater than ever this year. The kindergarten team, we meet monthly as a grade-level team, and much of our time is spent talking about the needs and challenges of our students. Many of our students have had no experience with school prior to coming to kindergarten, which is new because of the pandemic. And most of us have spent our entire year thus far working on the social emotional skills needed to even be in a classroom or in a school building, let alone access to academic curriculum. Our children are stressed from the pandemic, which is literally all they've known for their entire lives and all they can remember. And all of the classrooms have high numbers of children with special needs and at-risk children. This feels, this year feels different for many of us in terms of the extreme needs of our students, the levels of stress that families are under, and our inability to carry on with curriculum in ways that we typically have. The social emotional needs are just too great and need to be addressed before any other learning can take place. All that to say, next year, we send them off to first grade where the social and academic demands increase, class size increases, and they mingle with new teachers and new peers. And if this position's cut, they would potentially have access to only one adult. The first grade ESP position is a necessary support. Teachers are already stressed and pushed to their max, and you all need to be adding supports to teachers, people who work directly with children, not taking them away. We have a wonderful team of first grade ESPs that know what the routines and academic expectations are in first grade, and the salary of one ESP per building is a pretty cost-effective way to support children in first grade. It's short-sighted to remove a trained and successful person that may, that maybe later on will need to be brought back to provide intervention after the children have fallen further behind. Please do not cut the first grade ESP positions. Thanks so much.
Next is Karen Hidalgo.
Hi, I'm Karen Hidalgo. I live at 133 Barrett Street in Northampton. I have two students at JFK in grades six and eight who've been in the district since kindergarten. I've worked at Northampton High School as a school counselor for about seven years. I'm here to speak about the embedded honors classes in the math department at Northampton High School. I've spoken on this topic before, but we've had such a significant turnover in School Committee members that I wanted to address this again. Earlier this week, I sent an article to the members of the School Committee titled "Integrating Classrooms and Reducing Academic Tracking", which addressed the topic of embedded honors, and I hope you've had a chance to take a look at it. I've lived in Northampton for 25 out of the last 27 years, essentially all my adult life, and I've chosen very deliberately to live in this town that values diversity, equity, and the environment. I made a conscious choice to raise my children here and send them to our public schools. I love Northampton, and I'm very, very proud of our schools. Northampton High School has an amazing, talented, dedicated, and caring staff. We certainly have plenty of room to learn and grow, but there is a lot we do well. One of the areas we need to learn and grow is in having fully integrated classrooms. Like most public schools that are at least somewhat diverse, we have not completely figured out how to have our students of different racial, ethnic, and class backgrounds and abilities learning together in the same classrooms and the same groups. We have a diverse school, but our classrooms are still at least a little bit segregated. We haven't done that on purpose, and we want to do better. One of the things I am absolutely the most proud of about NHS is our math department, and in particular, the dedication of our math department to integrated classrooms. The Embedded Honors Program is one way that our math teachers have been working hard at educating all learners in a way that involves them in critical thinking, creative learning, and collaborative investigation. This is not to say that our teachers couldn't use more training or support in differentiation. I'm sure that many of them would find this very helpful. I implore you to take direction from our talented, professional, and dedicated math teachers about how to do this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Next is Mary Beth O'Connor.
Hi, can you hear me? Great. Hi, my name is Mary Beth O'Connor, and I live at 367 Rocky Hill Road in Florence. I am a member of the Northampton Musical Booster Club, and I'm here to thank you for voting to grant a waiver of the school masking policy to allow for an unmasked performance of Mamma Mia at the high school on March 17th, 18th, and 19th. The students involved in the show are so excited to have the musical back after a very long three-year hiatus. They have worked very hard to be ready for the performances and can't wait to share the show with their peers, families, friends, and the greater Northampton community. We so appreciate your willingness to consider this waiver as wearing masks on stage would greatly diminish both the energy and impact of the show. Singing, dancing, and acting with a mask on is extremely difficult. Wearing masks limits the performer's ability to fully connect with each other on stage and with the audience trying to watch and enjoy the performance. The CDC, Massachusetts DPH, and DESI no longer recommend universal masking in public places or in schools. And as was already mentioned, the Board of Health is meeting right now to discuss the mask mandate in Northampton, and it sounds like restrictions for the entire city may be lifted or reduced very soon. I know you are not planning on voting on the removal of the universal mask mandate in schools this evening, so it seems our show falls in a small window of time between when masks will most likely be removed in Northampton, but not yet in the school. Realizing this situation, I wrote to Meredith O'Leary, the Public Health Director, asking for an exception to the masking policy for the performers on the stage. Ms. O'Leary replied to my letter right away, letting me know that there is actually an exception to the mask mandate for performers. We were thrilled to hear this news. As explained in the guidelines for wearing masks or face coverings in the city of Northampton, performers are not required to wear face coverings but must adhere to social distancing of at least 10 feet from any members of the public when performing. Your vote to waive the mask mandate for the musical performance would be a reasonable option and allow the stage performers in the high school musical to follow the guidelines for performers in other venues in the city of Northampton. Students would be allowed to remove their masks only while performing on the NHS stage, which is more than 10 feet from the audience. All students, including stage performers, would be required to wear masks in all off-stage spaces. And of course, any student that felt more comfortable performing with a mask on would be encouraged to do so. It would be heartbreaking for this student event to be among the last in Northampton where masks are mandated, particularly given the data about the emotional toll the pandemic has had on students. We are hopeful you will see that the minimal risks associated with this requested exemption are heavily outweighed by the substantial benefits our request will have on the social, emotional, and mental health of the many students involved in the production of Mamma Mia. Thank you for voting to remove the mask mandate for performers and for all you do for the Northampton schools, and I hope to see you at the show.
Next is Lisa Echavaria. Sorry if I mispronounce your name.
Hi, yes, my name is Lisa Echevaria. I live at 77 Prospect Street in Northampton. I'm also a member of the Northampton Musical Booster Club, and I'm here to thank you in advance for voting to grant a waiver of the school masking policy to allow for an unmasked performance of Mamma Mia at the high school. My daughter Audrey is playing Tanya in the musical, and she and the rest of the cast are so excited to put this production on after waiting for several years. They've all overcome many obstacles to get to this point. I was there at a dress rehearsal earlier this week and observed as they persevered to, you know, stay on top of their lines and their dances and their stage movements, but also the struggle with the microphones and the masks. It's just as one more, you know, it's a substantial complication that makes their job that much harder. And as a member of the audience, I have to say it was very hard to hear the words that they were trying to articulate. It was hard to hear lyrics and the songs. You could hear the sound of the mask rubbing on the microphone, and so it really will diminish the experience of being in the audience. Audience members will be masked, of course, but we are hoping that the cast members could, while on stage only, go without their masks if they choose. If they choose to keep them on, they certainly can. And when they are backstage, as Mary Beth said, they will put the masks right back on. So I've heard that there's a production of Oklahoma this weekend at the Academy of Music. It has actors from ages 10 to 14 years old, and they will be unmasked. And I'm sure their performance will be great fun, and I hope that we can do the same. It would be a shame not to see the smiles on those kids' faces as they're up there singing their hearts out in this wonderful, joyful musical. Thank you so much for giving us the time to speak.
Thank you. Next is Heather Brown.
Hi. I'm Heather Brown. I live in Florence. I'm a parent of an eighth grader in our public school system. I'm an educator at Northampton High and have been for the past 25 years. And I'm also the vice president of NACE, so I'm intensely invested in our community and in the public schools here. And I'd just like to highlight, as you've heard from some other educators and parents, that NACE members are deeply troubled about the proposed cuts of any employees who have FaceTime in classrooms with students and, you know, proposals to add other positions at this time who don't directly work with students. It seems really troubling, especially after the past two years when these folks have worked so doggedly to help students through this pandemic. Please consider this when looking further at the budget. We hope that after having time to review the budget more carefully, and you will come up with some questions that you can ask and suggestions for other ways to make the budget work. I'm hoping that the superintendent can, you know, advise you on that, and please feel free to reach out to us for suggestions as well as we go through this budget process. So thank you for listening, and thank you for your careful work.
Thank you. Next up is Mindy Haskins Rogers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. I am a parent of a fifth grader at Leeds Elementary School, and I wanted first to urge the board and urge Dr. Provost not to reduce the sixth grade classes so that there are more students in the class. Our kids have lost so much time. I'm not only concerned about academic losses, but social and emotional losses, and there's nothing, there's no resource more valuable than a skilled adult in the classroom giving our kids their attention. This is a huge transition, this moment from fifth to sixth grade, from this sort of sheltered elementary school experience to this bigger school and a different kind of structure. And our kids need more support now than ever. It's a transition, not just academically, but developmentally. It's a big time in their lives, so I want to urge you to keep the three sixth grade classrooms and not reduce that number. I also am hoping that you're not going to vote on the masking tonight because it was not warned, but I do want to direct anybody who's considering this issue to the CDC's study that was released on Tuesday, it's published on their site, that It's published on their site that is a study of the efficacy of mask mandates in schools that corrected for some of the flaws in earlier studies that were less conclusive. This is based on 233 districts in Arkansas that had varying levels of mask requirements. And they found that overall there was, and they controlled for vaccination levels and infection levels in the community. And they found that overall mask mandates reduced transmission in schools by 23%. And I also wanted to point out that the CDC has shifted so that our zones, our regions that are coded red, yellow and green, that's no longer based on case count. That's based on hospitalizations. At least that's my understanding. I'm sure if our district has shifted to that yet, but that is the intent. And hospitalizations, as we know, lag weeks behind infections. So this is no longer a metric that's useful for actually gauging current transmission in our community. It shows us too late that this transmission has happened. It shows us when hospitalizations have risen and that means that there are maybe, who knows how many people have needlessly been infected because they were unaware of rising community levels. So it's no longer a sensitive enough metric. So I want to urge you, I hope you won't vote on it tonight because it wasn't warned, but to really consider this new data and consider the ways that we are reliant on data that are less sensitive at this time. So thank you for both of those, but the big thing is please don't cut our sixth grade groups. Our kids need so much support and there's no technology, there's no resource more valuable than those people in the room helping them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is John Fry.
Good evening, committee members, Mayor Shara, Superintendent Provost. My name is John Fry, living at 60 North Street, parent of a seventh grader at JFK. I speak tonight requesting the immediate transition to a masking optional environment in our schools, given the discontinuation of the city mask mandate effective immediately this evening by the Board of Health. It is time as we transition to an endemic phase to recognize that over the past two years, COVID has negatively and dramatically impacted learning and caused children a great deal of social and emotional harm. It is time to emphasize an urgency of normal to begin reversing these losses. Now, while numbers are low, let's focus on the kids versus less necessary virus precautions. I recognize that the school committee in January took back control of COVID policy from the superintendent and the Health Advisory Committee. I don't dispute your control over COVID policy at this point. However, the only policy currently in place is policy EBCFA, the face and masking face coverings policy adopted last fall. That policy is written, works like an on-off switch. It reads, quote, "The Northampton public schools will follow the current DESI guidance unless the superintendent's Health Advisory Committee and/or the city's Health Department decide to follow modified guidance and provide an explanation to the MPS community," end quote. Neither DESI nor the Health Advisory Committee, nor now the Board of Health have mandates in place. This policy, EBCFA, calls for the immediate discontinuation of the masking policy in Northampton public schools, barring a mandate from any of those sources. This policy defers decision-making based on those sources. This policy is actually clear and concise. It doesn't need voted on to rescind current masking protocols. Likewise, it is not needed, likewise, it will not need to be re-voted on when and if DESI, et cetera, issues new mandates following a future surge. The policy, if followed, works well as is. I call for the school committee to not vote on dropping the masking mandate because this policy doesn't work that way. Rather, I call on you to recognize the terms and mechanism of the policy and immediately direct the superintendent to institute choice masking protocols for all of our public schools. We know this is contentious subject. There is no need for more surveys. There is no basis for continued delay. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Ronnie Gold.
Uh, good evening. My name is Ronnie Gold. I live at 15 Linden Street and I have two daughters at Vittory School. Uh, first, thank you all for your service and for the time to speak with you tonight on the masking issue and the current budget proposal. In regards to masking, I'm requesting that you vote against having a community survey on this issue. And instead, let the decision solely be informed by the Board of Health's guidance on what is safe for our students and teachers. It is an indisputable fact that masks are a major impediment to the social, emotional and academic development of our children. While up to now massive and a necessary impediment to learning, since the Board of Health tonight established this impediment is no longer necessary, please do not take any actions that will unnecessarily delay removing masks first, or moving to mask optional for our students and teachers. Instead, please move as quickly as possible to ensure this very significant obstacle to teaching and learning is eliminated. I ask that either you schedule or hold a meeting at the earliest available time to align our school policy and practice with the Board of Health and follow the guidance of our city's health leaders. Or as the Speaker of Reform, John Fry, pointed out, Superintendent Provost, you still do have the authority through the Shack to remove masks since the current policy is what holds. The one that was in January has not yet been voted on and in place. This topic is too important and time-consuming to add to a meeting with other big agenda items like you have on March 24th. And there is clearly precedent for adding an additional meeting as you did this past January and hope you do so at the first available time. In regards to the budget, I really appreciated getting to watch Dr. Provost's in-depth presentation of the first-view budget and the school committee's thoughtful discussion after. As the budget presentation showed and a previous speaker Jonathan Brody had pointed out, as recently as 2014, Leeds and Bridge Street School received between 30 and 50% less per student than the other four schools in their building-based budget, which is clearly an injustice. And so I appreciated seeing that the building-based budgets are now equalized. So all schools have a $215 per student allocation in the building's base budget. While the building-based budget seems small overall, clearly it can have a huge impact as other schools in the district use that budget to purchase staffing positions. Dr. Provost, while you did say that you plan to adjust building-based budgets next year so they're more reflecting the next budget, so they're more reflective of the needs of schools, it's unclear why needs-based budgeting is not already going to happen in this year's budget and has to wait till next year. And so I ask that you allocate either the budget through ESAR funds or however you seem fit to support a needs-based allocation of the building budget this year. And I strongly feel it would be an injustice to delay writing the inequities in the past budgets and punting it to next year. Lastly, before I go, Dr. Provost, I would hope that considering the comments that we're hearing tonight and the concerns about the JFK situation, that during your superintendent's report, if you could please add a little bit more detail for everybody on what is happening there. I was lucky enough to attend the JFK School Council meeting last week and heard Principal Caldwell speak very clearly about the impacts and what have you. And I would hope that you can provide some clarity during your superintendent's report on the current situation. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next is Kevin Mackey.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, my name is Kevin Mackey. I'm a resident in Florence on North Maple Street. And I'd like to echo the sentiments of Adrian, John and Rony as far as the mask mandates. And I agree with Rony that this should be expedited to make a decision on this soon. As the Board of Health has, it's been confirmed that the Board of Health has voted to drop it in the city. The kids have taken, they've spent too long in masks. It's hurting their developmental. It's hurting their speech development and it can even cause dental problems. And I think we've all seen the negative effects that prolonged masking has had on the kids up till now. And I agree, it's too important of an issue to shelve into the next meeting. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the last hand that I see. Again, I made the mistake of saying that you could send me a chat if you were having trouble forgetting that for some reason, or maybe for the reason, chat is not, not a feature that is used, so you have no access to it. So I'm just doing a quick scroll through. If you were trying to raise your hand and you weren't able to, please turn your camera on and just wave at me old school style and I'm going to look for you and school committee members also help me out. But I'm not seeing anybody else. Okay, seeing no further public comment, we will start with the rest of the agenda. Thank you everyone for your comments. Um, okay, next up are announcements. School committee members, show me the announcements. Uh, Member Robbins, please.
Yes, I want to be able to take a moment to honor the memory of Fran O'Donnell, who was a much beloved English teacher at our high school for many years. And many of us remember him as being the kind of educator we'd all like to be and we'd like to have in our children's lives. Somebody who was a deep academic, who loved teaching stories, encouraged all kinds of kids to be writers, had an extraordinary sense of humor and engaged with a really magnetic smile with everybody who met him. He leaves a fantastic legacy. We will miss him very much and maybe just a real short moment for Fran, the kind of person who spends his life with our children and who quietly leaves it. Thank you.
Thank you for that remembrance, Member Robbins. Uh, Member Levy.
Thank you, Member Robbins. Uh, I just want to share with committee members, I I don't know where we are in getting a local offering of the MASC mandatory workshop, but it is being offered virtually. Tomorrow morning is the first half and next, nope, I really wished it was Friday. Saturday morning is the first workshop and the following Saturday will be the second half. So for folks who are interested in doing it virtually and not traveling the state, I recommend you check it out on the MASC website. And I'm not sure if Superintendent Provost, if you have an update on a local offering of that workshop.
I am texting the Executive Director of CES right now. So if I find out by my report, I'll share that then.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any other announcements from school committee members? Seeing none, we are going to move on to our recommended actions, our consent agenda. These are the items and then if there's anything that needs discussion, please tell me and we'll pull it off of the agenda. Otherwise, there's no discussion on this. Um, so A, our approval of minutes, this is from the school committee on February 10th, 2022. The special school committee meeting on February 16th and then a school committee budget meeting on February 28th. And the other items are budget transfers. So district to custodial of $30,000 to settle an account deficit and a legal services transfer of $135,000 to cover a deficit in legal services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And they, um, uh, Member Robbins, did you want to remove something from?
No, I'd like to, are we going to have a discussion about these or just approve them?
These items have no discussion unless you remove them out of the consent agenda.
Yes, I would like to remove the item about the legal expenses out of the consent agenda. Thank you.
Okay, um, so Member Goldman, would you like to modify your motion?
I accept.
Okay, so, um, so it's a motion to approve with last item, legal services transfer removed. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Member Levy. Okay, roll call please, Annie. You're muted, Annie.
All right, Member Robbins?
Here. Yes, sorry. Sorry.
Member Gacy?
Oh yeah, I wasn't sure if you said me. Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
No, that's me.
Uh, Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Agnes?
Yes.
Member Davis? You can't unmute. Let me, let me turn you into a co-host. Apologies.
Thank you. I guess I'm pretty good at moving my lips. Uh, yes.
And Mayor Scott?
Yes. Um, okay, so now is there a motion on this last item and then we can have it up for discussion? Motion to approve the transfer?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second, uh, motion made by Member Goldman, seconded by Member Levy. Um, Member Robbins, did you have a question? Can you not unmute?
I was shaking my head. I was using a physical, no.
No question. But you wanted to discuss this item? No?
No.
Okay, um, well, since we've removed it from the consent agenda, we can discuss if anyone has any, any item to discuss. I can't see, I guess I can see, uh, Member Stein?
Yeah, I was just curious about learning more on, um, what, what sort of things are driving the cost that led to the deficit? You know, it's, it's obviously my first term here and I haven't seen these contracts go through renewals. And I know it's also a bargaining year. But it would be great to understand more or less what ate up the 300,000 that we're now topping off, if I'm getting these numbers correctly from what I read earlier. So uh, I'm just, that would be my comment. I'd like some more granular detail.
Uh, Dr. Provost?
So I can speak to that in broad strokes. Um, and I'll go back to something that Member Stein said. We're not only in a negotiating year, we were in essentially three continuous years of negotiation due to COVID. You know, when we had originally set aside the money, we were anticipating that it would be regular legal costs plus the cost of one collective bargaining agreement. But negotiating around COVID was extremely time-consuming. I think Annie and I were reflecting a few weeks ago about a month where we had, I believe it was more than 20 meetings. And many of those were around negotiating with COVID, which had to be done on a very timely basis because we were trying to get a lot of things in place so that we could open schools and that consumed a great deal of legal costs.
Okay, any, Member Robbins?
Okay, um, I actually wonder if we could have a more specific breakdown of it. It's just an extraordinary amount of money and we don't have, our attorney is on a consultant basis. I'm not really even sure what that is. But it's hard to know, having spent the money and an additional $80,000, what that looks like as we move forward. So is there an increase in what our attorney is asking for in terms of what the payment is on billable hours after the contract? It's just very fuzzy to me about what we are paying for now and what that really puts down for us in terms of expectations in the future.
So I can speak to that. The hourly rates were fixed at the beginning of the, of the contract and they have not changed. It's the number of hours, as I said, and that was mainly due to all the negotiations that happened around COVID. When we put forward the contract at the beginning, we had an estimate of how much negotiation would be needed for collective bargaining agreement, which was based on our experience with the last collective bargaining agreement. What we did not have was, um, any, any contingency in there for something like the amount of hours of negotiation that would happen for COVID.
Can I ask one more question? I wonder if we could have a more of a percentage breakdown between what was COVID-related and what were negotiations and what are others? And possibly a breakdown of COVID, you know, post-COVID expenditures. It's just really hard to get that big picture. So if there was a pie chart that said this amount went to COVID, this amount went to negotiations and this amount went to other stuff.
So I would turn to Nick to see if he can give like a sort of broad stroke answer to that because I know one of the things he does when we get the bills on a monthly basis is figure out how much of the legal costs can be charged to COVID relief funds. So he has been in the practice of doing that, although I'm not sure that he had that, the three years of that broken out for tonight.
No, I certainly do not have the three years of that broken out for tonight. You know, just a little background, I guess, as Dr. Provost said, when the contract was originally signed nearly three years ago, it was based on what they've historically spent on legal fees, including one cycle of the collective bargaining process. You add the pandemic and all related negotiations and on top of that, the amount of hours went up dramatically. The reason why we're asking for the transfer is because the, you know, the $300,000 that the contract was originally for, that was supposed to be for three full years. But, you know, and you'll notice in the monthly year-to-date budget reports that I give you, the, the legal fees account is almost always, well, I mean, maybe not in July or August, but you know, by like October and November, it gets into a deficit and you know, right now it's at a pretty hearty $55,000 deficit. I do charge what I can to ESSER. Any COVID-related bargaining can be charged and I, I go through the invoices every month and see what I can do. I'm going to be honest, since I started in July and going up to now, it's less and less every month. But you would imagine that because there's less pandemic-related bargaining that that's occurring now. You know, than there was, you know, back then and certainly before my time. So, you know, the legal fees are a combination of, you know, bargaining different MOAs that may come up, you know, during the life of a CBA. Grievances are a part of it. When Leila attends school committee meetings for this, that, or the other thing, that's, that's a piece of it. You know, anytime she takes a phone call, sends an email, you know, drafts language of a policy or something like that, it's, you know, as Dr. Provost said, the hourly rate hasn't changed, but there, there's a lot of hours and it's, it's about $255 an hour. So that adds up very quickly. So, you know, in looking at what we've been spending, we found recently that the $300,000 that the contract was written for was almost gone. And, you know, we need to amend the contract in order to finish the year. And we can't amend the contract if that accounts in deficit, like there, there has to be an appropriation there in order to amend the contract. So what we need to do is cover the deficits and then try to, you know, estimate what we're going to spend between now and June, keeping in mind that we are currently bargaining with six bargaining units. So that's where the $135,000 figure came from. It's to cover the deficit, to get that account to zero and then to add what we project we will need between now and June 30th. I hope that provides a little bit of clarity. I know it's not an exact breakdown, but in order to get that, that, that's going to take some time. I mean, somebody in the business office will have to look through three years of bills, some of which are up to 40 pages long per month and then, you know, calculate that, which that, that's going to take some time.
Nick, Member Stein?
This is just sort of a follow-up question for Nick. And I apologize if, if you address this and it went over my head. But for the COVID-related expenses for which we could request reimbursement for from other federal funds, so is that on top of the $300,000? So like, in other words, like the way I think about it is we've appropriated $300,000 over a three-year period from the MPS budget, right? And then we're asked for more money, but some of these are apparently being covered by other reimbursements. Like, what's the total figure here? Like, have we blown through the 300 and then we've also requested reimbursements on top of that?
No, it's just, it's the 300. It's, you know, the, the, because the $300,000 figure is the amount that the contract was written for. When, when a contract is written, you know, with the city, there, there could be different funding sources that, you know, the, the contract will be paid through, you know, most of which would be our local appropriation. In this case, certainly some ESSER money, but you know, the, the key is the fact that the contract was written for $300 and that's what needs to be amended. So it's not, you know, it's not more than the 300,000, you know, on top of federally reimbursed money. That, that's a total figure. I, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thanks so much.
Absolutely.
Member Robbins, do you have another question or is your hand still up?
No, I have another question. And thank, thank you, Nick. I don't mean to make it work for you and I don't want you to comb through lots of stuff, but I think this is just a lot of money and I hope that will be part of talking about what a future contract will be. But perhaps as we move on, it would be nice to have sort of an earmark about what you think are the major categories of expenditures that we use legal advice for, so that we could actually be having a conversation we know a little bit more about. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, roll call, please, Annie?
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Agnes?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Ciara?
Yes.
And Member Robbins?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed and we are moving on to reports and recommendations. First up is budget and property and there was a scrivener's error on the agenda, so it's actually a Member Goldman who will be reporting.
We have no updates at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving down to the curriculum subcommittee, Member Robbins?
We actually have not met since our last report either, but we're having a good time planning our next meeting. We're looking forward to that on March 23rd at 5:00 PM. We're going to finalize our committee mission and draft this year's priorities. And we're also looking forward to our discussion with the NHS Student Union's Anti-Racism Subcommittee. Their proposal to deepen NIH, NHS graduation requirements by adding a diversity supplement. We have also invited the JFK Grade Six teachers to share their concerns they have raised about team size as projected in the FY23 budget and its impact on students. And I believe they've accepted our invitation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Business Administrator Report. Nick, again.
All right, good evening, everyone. If you don't mind, Mayor Ciara, I might do the Personnel Report before the Business Administrator Report, just because going through the budget book is going to take some time. And, you know, usually we do the Personnel Report afterwards, but I feel like the bulk of this is going to be that. So if you don't mind, I'll do the Personnel Report first.
Got it all. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. In February, we had five new hires, one transfer and seven separations. The separations were, to my knowledge, for a variety of reasons. A couple of staff members took other positions, not necessarily in education. There's a couple of unknowns and one retirements among those seven. In terms of the demographic data of the folks who separated in February, 14.3% were male, 85.7% were female, 71.4% were Caucasian and 28.6% were Hispanic. This brings our year separation statistics and there's been 57 separations since I started keeping this data over the course of the year. 84.2% were Caucasian, 3.5% were black, 5.3% were Asian, 1.8% identified as being both white and Hispanic and 5.3% identified as Hispanic. 75.4% were female, 22.8% identified as male and 1.8% identified as non-binary. Current vacancies we have, Bridge Street School still as a vacant, our end position open. Leeds has a vacant special education teacher open. JFK has a .5 PE teacher, a math interventionist, their library assistant, two recently retired, and five ESPs. And NHS has a school psychologist still vacant, two custodians. And I'm going to cross the one ESP off my list because I signed paperwork for that person today. So that is all of your vacancies for, well, currently, and that's the Personnel Report for the month. Moving on to the Business Administrator Report. Enclosed is the monthly year-to-date budget report that I give you each month. We're, we're continuing to work with administrators and staff to prepare the needed transfers. You know, as we just discussed during the consent agenda piece. You'll see that as the year gets closer to the end, there will be more and more transfers happening to, to cover deficits and, you know, we have more of a complete picture of where everything's going to be as we creep closer to the end of the fiscal year. I'm happy to announce that we were recently awarded a $17,240 food service equipment grant to purchase convection ovens for both Jackson Street and Leeds Elementary Schools. Our Food Service Director, Mistel Hannah, has applied for this grant, I believe, for the last four years and she finally was awarded it. So we will soon begin the procurement process as the funds have to be spent by August 30th, 2022. And this will not impact the capital request that we had made. You may recall there were some food service items in the capital request. But these ovens were not part of that. So we'll, we'll be able to add this on, on top of anything you may be given through capital. There were no gifts or donations valued at less than $1,000 during the month of February. So nothing to report there. There's the both bill warrants that Member Agnes approved during the month, included in your packet and that's my report, except obviously for the budget book. Does anybody have any questions before I move on to that?
I'm not.
All right, great. So now I will, I will take you on a guided tour of the FY23 budget book. First, I would like to announce to the public, if, if you wanted to view this as well, it is on the Northampton Public Schools website. If you go to the website and then look in the District Information tab, there'll be a dropdown menu. Toward the bottom, it says Fiscal Budget Archives. If you go to that, the 2023 fiscal year district budget will be the top item you can choose from. And it's, it's there for you. The PDF has been uploaded to the website. So if anybody wants to follow along, there it is. I can also share my screen if you think that would be helpful while I go through the tour of the budget book.
I would say probably that would be particularly helpful for anyone who's on the Zoom.
Sure. Let me just find the tab. All right. Can we all see the cover of the budget book? All right, let me zoom out a little bit. Probably that's the best. So as you look at the cover of the budget book, I'm going to take this opportunity to thank a few people that helped me along with this process. Starting with the cover, I'd like to thank Jeremy Whalen, Communications and Media Production Teacher at the high school, along with his student Miguel Wharton for their work in designing the cover of the book. We asked principals to submit some pictures from their, their schools and then Mr. Whalen and his students worked to, to put the cover together. You know, I can say of everybody that came to pick up the budget books today, you know, I heard often that the, the books were beautiful and that was before they even opened them. So I, that speaks to the cover and, and then how engaging and thorough it is and showing, showing our district. So thank you for that. I'd like to thank our business office staff as well for the help that they gave me along the way and, you know, making sure that they were able to take some things off of my plate when I really needed to focus on, on making this. I'd like to thank our ALP team and Dr. Provost for all the collaboration and input into developing this. I'd like to thank the school committee for your guidance and feedback throughout the process so far. I'd like to thank the residents of Northampton and the city government for their support, along with Mayor Ciara for committing to the 4% increase. And lastly, I would like to thank our copier, who we affectionately call Hal. He's been known to break down quite a bit, but he, he overachieved during this. I can, I can tell you that much. Did a very good job and I appreciated that. So anyway, without further ado, I will present the FY23 budget book to you. First, what I'm going to do, I'll start to scroll here. I'm going to start by showing you the superintendent's budget message, which is always the first page of the budget book. It, it contains, you know, largely a rationale for the budget that we're proposing. It includes the basis for this is some, some decisions that were made and, you know, the direction in which the superintendent would like to, to take the district in. So I would encourage all of you before really diving into the book to, to read the message first, because it really sets the tone for what's in the rest of the 211 pages that are, 210 pages that are there. After that, there's, there's a table of contents here. And what I'll do now is I'll just take a second to kind of explain the makeup of the book, the layout of it, so you kind of figure out how it's organized. The overview is, is the first section and that, that's really a summary. It's going to tell you what the increase we're asking for is. It's going to show you what we're spending on each cost center. It's going to show you proposed staffing changes. It's going to show you, you know, basic information. You will probably find yourself looking at that part of the budget book more than anything. The second part is the first view, which Dr. Provost presented last Monday at the meeting. There's a printed copy in all of your books and obviously a scanned copy here in the electronic version. So that piece I'm not going to spend any time talking about since it's already been presented, but it's included in the book. So you can refer to it along the way. After that, our cost centers are included. You've got your six schools, you've got our athletic department, the student services, central services and district-wide costs. And then at the end, you've got grants and revolving accounts. So that's any money that's not part of our local appropriation, that's part of the budget. There's some DESI and Department of Revenue information and then Section 15 is, is a miscellaneous section that I'll, I'll go through if you get there. All right, so we also have our list of school committee members as well in our, our budget book. All right, so this is our summary sheet, really. What we are asking for is a $34,800,372 budget for FY23, which would represent a $1,338,476 increase over this current year's appropriation. You might note the asterisk next to the FY22 city appropriation. Um, you might note the asterisk next to the FY twenty-two city appropriation, and that is because that number does not include the thirty-one thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars that, um, we were reimbursed for McKinney-Vento and foster care transportation. Um, that money we can claim and we do get some reimbursement for it. It goes to the city. Um, but e- every year, the, the city council, um, votes to, um, give that, basically reappropriate that to the school department. We're very appreciative of it because the cost of, um, transportation, particularly among foster care students, um, has risen recently. So that money goes, you know, back into that account so we can pay for, um, who we're transporting now. So overall, what we're asking for represents exactly a four percent increase over this year. The next, um, se- or page here, and, and I'm not going to go through every single page of the entire budget book. We would be here until tomorrow morning if I did that, but for the first section I will, because as I said, you will probably find yourself looking at this piece more than any other, and it's, it's important to go through every page of the first section. Um, so this is our, our proposed budget by cost center. Um, you can see it, uh, over time, the progression, um, for each of the cost centers. And, but in the, you know, the fourth column over, you'll see what we're proposing for each of the cost centers for, um, next year. It's important to note here on this page that special education is all special education. So if you're a Bridge Street School Special Education teacher, your salary is in the special education line there, not the Bridge Street Elementary School line, okay? It's been separated for the purpose of this particular page. Um, sometimes you will see it separated, sometimes you will see it together, um, depending on the part of the budget book you're looking at. Um, the fifth column, uh, over is other funding, that would be grants and revolving accounts, um, and what we're proposing to spend out of there. Um, and then the last column is our change from, um, basically what we're proposing next year compared to this year. Um, and you'll see that, you know, some cost centers went down, um, due to either attrition or proposed changes in staffing. Others went up. Um, I can explain that in more detail as we get to the actual cost centers. Next, uh, page is, is a pie chart with our budget by cost center. So it's pretty much what you just looked at, um, on the previous page with, um, with a, a pie chart connected to it. Um, it does include all of the funding sources, you know, together you see the local budget column, the other funding column, and then the totals. So, um, it breaks it up into where, you know, which cost centers we're spending our, our money at, the different percentages. The next page is when we include special education in the school site budgets rather than as an entity by itself. Um, so you will notice, um, the, you know, what we're proposing from the local budget for each cost center, um, with the exception of, you know, athletics and central services where there wouldn't be a special education component. Um, those would be higher here because we're including, uh, special education in the cost centers rather than separating it. Um, so that's how the budget breaks down, we separate it that way. Um, we also in, in this one have, um, our number of students, the, uh, the enrollment is listed there as well. Um, that enrollment is as of October first, uh, two thousand twenty-one, which the state bases our, our chapter seventy funding off of. This next sheet, um, breaks it down a different way. It's our summary of all funds. It basically breaks it down into a few different categories, what we're spending on personnel, um, transportation, tuitions, utilities, and all other costs, which didn't fit me into, into any of those other buckets. Uh, and you can see the different funding sources there, the local appropriation, school choice. Um, so rather than just calling it, you know, grants and revolving in general, I broke it down here to be more specific. Uh, you see circuit breaker there, um, for special education. You see the food service, um, revolving account, athletic, bus, um, and then there's other grants, um, you know, S R grants would be included in there, the two forty grants, um, for special education would be in there as well. Um, and then all the way over to the right, you see the, the total budget. Um, and then on the bottom is the total amount from each source. Um, and if you add all that together, it's, it's forty-one point seven million dollars. If you add together the local appropriation and all the other sources, that's what it comes to. All right, this next, um, chart here, uh, breaks it down by DESI function code. Um, basically, I mean, this has a lot to do with state reporting. Um, you, you know, there, there's a chart of accounts that comes from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, how we kind of classify everything that we spend. Um, so our, our major categories, um, you can see what percentage of our, our budget, and this is the local appropriation only, this does not include any of the other funding sources. Um, you can see what percent we spend on administration, instruction, student services, um, which does not include special education. Um, you know, our, our department, uh, our student services department includes our special education department, but for the purpose of this, student services includes things like food service, health services, transportation. Um, special education would be included in, uh, administration and instruction, um, and also tuitions here. Um, operation and maintenance, you can see what we, um, propose to spend on that. Um, employee benefits and fixed costs, you can see that as a small amount, but, you know, still something we certainly need to appropriate money for. Um, and then out, out of district tuitions as well as included in there. So that's how it breaks down, um, by, you know, I guess different DESI category, but you can see that nearly seventy-six percent of the money that we've proposed to, um, to spend would be on instruction. Next page breaks it down a little bit differently. Um, this one kind of mirrors the summary of all funds page that was, um, two pages ago. It, you can see it broken down into personnel, tuitions, transportation, utilities, and then those other costs that don't fit any other buckets. Um, this chart does include all funding sources, so this is the local appropriation and any grant and revolving money, um, in our proposal. Um, what sticks out the most here is the eighty-one point two-two percent, um, for personnel, which is very close to what wa- was proposed in FY twenty-two. It, it was eighty-one point, I believe, thirty-something percent, so, um, in FY twenty-two. So i- it's always eighty, between eighty and eighty-two percent is, is going to be spent on personnel. All right, the next, uh, section, staffing changes. This is broken down into two parts, and this is longer than it would be in most years. Um, now, the first part of this is FY twenty-two changes after the budget was approved. So this long list you're looking at right now is any changes that have occurred, um, since the budget was passed last, uh, April, right after my, uh, interview for this position. Um, you can see that there's quite a few, um, a lot of them are very minor changes, uh, some food service staff, workers' hours increased a little bit, but it's still a change from, you know, what was in, in last year's budget book. So I, I did note it here because you will see those changes when you get to the different cost centers. Um, in the FTE pages, you'll see these changes, so, um, any change you're going to see there, you'll also see here. Um, another thing that, that was, you know, particular about this year was, um, just the amount of positions that we needed to add, um, due to, you know, COVID nineteen and the impact that it's had, um, among the students. Um, we have added several ESPs over the course of the year, um, you know, to support students. Sometimes if a student moved into the district that required that, um, an ESP would have to be hired as well. Um, so among the, um, changes between the passage of this budget and now, we have added fifteen point zero five total FTE to our, our workforce. Um, member Seraphie Cox, I see raised your hand.
Oh, um, uh, at the end of your, of your presentation, I just have a question about a previous page.
Oh, okay, sure. That virtual hand's going to get tired by the time I'm done with this, but absolutely. Um, so then, um, we get on to the, uh, staffing changes and the FY twenty-three budget proposal, um, which have been noted in, in Dr. Provost's first view last week. Um, I will speak to these specifically when we get to the different cost centers, um, rather than do it here. I'll do it by, by building.
Remember, can I?
Oh, sorry, I was going to ask if you were just getting in queue behind member Seraphie Cox, if you had a question right now.
Thanks, I do. I just wonder, I know it's somewhere, but Nick, can you point us to the page where it shows, like, this, this page that you were just on, one page above, shows the sta- budget staffing changes for FY twenty-three? Where does it show the cost of each of those?
The cost, uh, it's not going to show the cost in the budget book.
Huh.
Well, actually, it, well, okay, let me, let me go back. Um, when you get to the budget pages of each cost center, you're going to see, um, that there's a column that says FY twenty-two approved budget, which will be slightly different than whatever the FY tw-, what, like, what was in the budget book for, um, the FY twenty-two proposed budget. Um, the, you know, what ends up actually happening, you know, ends up a little bit differently, because when the budget book is produced, um, feedback is, is given from the committee and, and, you know, likely a couple of changes may have to take place before the budget actually passes. Those changes don't reflect in the budget book that gets produced, like, the, the book is the book. It's not going to change after, um, you know, after now. Um, whatever changes occur between now and, and the passage of the budget ultimately will be noted somewhere else. But when I created this, I had to go through and, you know, basically change anything that was different in the proposed column to what was actually approved. Anything that has been added since then in terms of a cost, you're not going to specifically see in the, um, in this budget book, because it wasn't part of the, you know, it wasn't part of the budget process last year, it happened after the fact.
Sorry, I, I, I mean, I guess what I'm looking for is the, the proposals that Superintendent Provost has put forward in, I believe, last, in our last meeting, in the first view budget, it was, it was shown to us all of the proposed cuts and how much money each would save and all of the proposed additions, and how much each of those positions would cost. I'm looking for that page.
Oh, okay, I, I apologize, member Levy. I thought you were talking about the cost of the positions that were added during FY twenty-two. I did not think you were referring to what we're proposing for FY twenty-three.
Right, yeah, I'm looking at the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that will be, yeah, I apologize. I missen- I, I misunderstood your, uh, your question. Yeah, you will see that in the budget pages of each cost center, yep.
So we have to look at it, each cost center by each cost center. Is it possible to get that all lumped together somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could create something separate and, and share it with you, yes.
Okay, for me, that would be really, really helpful, so that in one place we can see what's being proposed to be cut and what, and what the costs are of those and what's being proposed to be added and what the costs are of those without having to go to each individual cost centers and, and find it ourselves.
Sure, so you just want a cost of everything under FY twenty-two new that you can match with the list that's here?
No, for the proposed FY twenty-three.
I, I meant twenty-three, that's why I said twenty-two.
Superintendent Provost might know where this is located.
I think the, the easiest place to find it in existing documentation in the budget book is in the first view budget. Um, as you mentioned, I did that list. Uh, so if you look on page, uh, this is one of the parts that is, um, page numbered. Unfortunately, most of the budget book is not page numbered, but if you go in to the first view budget and you look at page twenty-one and twenty-two.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I was at page twenty-one and I see the cost of the reductions. Where, where are the costs of the proposed additions, though?
Um, those, those are in the cost center, so we could, if, if you want, we could pull those pieces out.
That would be really helpful.
Okay, and we are planning on going, or Nick is planning on going through, uh, the ones, most of them are in S R fund, so he's going to be pointing them out when he gets to the S R part of this, part of this budget.
Okay, so you'll follow up with us with something that shows all of the proposed cuts and all of the proposed additions in one place?
Yeah, yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, um.
Can I just ask one question? When you do that, can you include FTEs in addition to the, um, dollar amount?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it would just mirror that list that's on the previous page. Yeah, you'll see the FTE. Um, all right, the next page here talks about, um, this, or just shows you our breakdown of ESPs, um, and where, um, we're proposing them to all be assigned for building next year. You'll see the bulk of them work, um, in special education. Um, there's some preschool ESPs, um, lunch and recess, bus ESPs in a couple of buildings, um, kindergarten ESPs, uh, none of the library ESPs as well. So, um, the total number of ESPs would be a hundred and twenty-one point one if you add all this together. Um, it's important to note that our, um, our LPNs and our therapy assistants are also included in the ESP bargaining unit, but they're not reflected in this, in this chart. This is only ESPs. Okay, as I said, section two, I'm, I'm not going to go through because Dr. Provost, um, has already presented that. So now we'll get to the cost centers in a moment. All right, so all of our cost centers, um, are, you know, really where we're spending our, our money. We break it down by, uh, in most cases, schools, but it also could be, uh, departments as well. Um, so we're going to start with Bridge Street. Um, you'll notice that each cost center begins with a narrative that's written by either the principal or the, um, you know, the department head or, I know, whoever was in charge of, of that cost center. Um, I would, um, certainly encourage that you thoroughly read the narratives prior to looking at, at what else is in each cost centers section, because this is really where you see where, what the money is being spent on. Um, obviously, the FTE sheet breaks it down by who's working where and, and then the budget pages show you, you know, what accounts and, um, and salaries that, that, you know, money is being spent in each, each cost center. But, um, this gives a really good qualitative, um, description of, of what, you know, the money is being spent on in each of the cost centers. And, um, you, you know, it, it really gives you an idea of what's going on in the school. So I, I certainly would encourage you to take time and thoroughly read these, um, prior to looking at the rest of what's in each, um, cost centers tab. All right, so now we get to the FTE page for, um, Bridge Street here. Um, you'll notice that, you know, it's broken down by, um, you know, specific, um, type of staff member. Um, special education is not included on this page, that will be on the next page. We've broken it down into two places, two different, um, you know, we break it down that way to show you what's being spent on special education and how many FTEs are, are working in special education. Um, so the first column, you'll see that, you know, in FY twenty-two, what was budgeted, um, both locally and then in the other funding column, you'll see. Um, in the middle, it says current, that reflects any changes that have happened between this year's budget passed and, and the publication of this book. Um, and then the total of that, you'll see at, at the bottom there in the middle, and I, I put a note next to each one as, as well, so you can, um, you know, you can see, and it looks like Bridge Street has less staff, but that's not the case. It's just some ESPs that used to be working in regular ed are now working in special ed. So you'll see a different number when we get to the next page. Um, you'll see that the food service staff, uh, hours increased slightly, and then so did reading intervention, that increased very, very slightly. Um, and the third column over, you'll see the propose, what we're proposing for next. In the third column over, you'll see the propose, what we're proposing for next year. And then, you know, it's broken down by the, what would come out of the local budget and what would come out of other funding. Any changes that, you know, we propose taking, that would take place, I have put a note there in the far right-hand column. You'll notice we're proposing an increase to one point eight FTE reading intervention at Bridge, partially with Title One funding and, and partially with S R three funding. And then the eliminating the one point oh FTE grade one ESP is noted there as well. So you'll see the two in that column is, is one fewer than the current three that, that's there. So any changes that we're proposing for next year, you'll see in the notes over there and they'll match what was on the, the other page that shows all the proposed staffing changes that, that we discussed a moment ago. This is special education at Bridge Street.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Um, is it the case that where we're seeing like the line at Bridge Street says, in five eleven four hundred, it says, I mean, in, it says teachers academic support. Is it generally the case throughout the budget that where you see academic support, that's an interventionist?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, academic support teachers will be either reading or math interventionists. Yep.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make it clear because that's the language we're used to seeing on academic support. And I, it just can be confusing what academic support means. So it's not a coach, it's an interventionist.
Yeah, that's what I, the reason why it says academic support there is it really has to do with the name of the code that comes with the DESI chart of accounts.
Of course.
Um, you know.
Thank you.
Yep. So this is special education at, at Bridge Street again, as I said. This is where you'll see the, the ESPs that were used to work in regular education but have moved to special education. There's been two point seven six pre-K ESPs added during the course of this year. So, you know, in total, six point five FTE have been added to Bridge Street during the course of this year. Proposed for next year, you will not notice any changes there in Bridge Street for special education. So all that the current numbers will, would match the proposed numbers for next year. That's why you don't see any notes there, right? All right, here's where we get to the budget pages, okay, for, for Bridge Street. Excuse me, I'm just gonna grab my binder here while I do this. I have put notes next to, you know, proposed staffing changes, so you'll know, you know, what that is. But there are some larger amounts there that you'll see that, that might, you know, make you wonder, well, why is that much less being spent on, on this than this year? So I can, I can speak to that. So you see a progression over time here, going back to FY twenty. For FY twenty and last year, the numbers you see here is what was actually spent out of the school committee budget. That, those numbers would be different than the approved budget because, as you know, budgets are moving targets. Sometimes people leave and somebody gets hired who makes less money and then what's actually spent is less than, than what you thought was gonna be and, and everything. So that FY twenty-one actual expenditure column is what was actually spent last year in each of these things. The FY twenty-two approved budget is what you approved nearly a year ago. Again, slightly different than like, than what was in the budget book from this year, but a lot of it was the same. I mean, there's, there's not nearly the deviation there that you would see in the actual expenditure column. The next columns are proposed budget for next year. And that's the local budget, the column next to its other funding, which would be grants and revolving accounts. And that does include COVID relief funds. Last year, this year's budget book did not. But the COVID relief funds at, at that point, I, I don't believe the spending plan had been completely developed when the budget book was produced. Between then and now, we've received S R two and three money, so I certainly wanted to include it in our other funding column here for, for our proposal for next year. The last column, the school committee appropriation change, that's just the change in what we're proposing to spend next year compared to what we're spending this year. That does not include other funding sources, so anything grant funded wouldn't be in there. That's just the local appropriation. Some things, as I said, I, I put notes next to, you know, particularly if there was a staffing change, but, you know, you may look here and see a nearly twenty thousand dollar decrease in the, you know, in one item, and, and that would be due to a retirement. While we don't know what the new staff member will make, you know, we can kind of guess and, and, you know, base our budget off of that. It might be a little higher, it might be a little bit lower, but, you know, looking at higher, like hiring history data, we kind of get a picture of where new hires might be on the salary scale. Next is Bridge Street Special Ed, which would be, you know, basically what we're spending on special ed there, including staff, including, you know, supplies, things like that. So now that I've explained in a little more detail what the budget pages look like, I'm, you know, I'm not going to, obviously, you know, for the purpose of tonight, go through every single page, but I did want to give you an idea of how we organize these pages. But, you know, big changes nonetheless, I still will note as I go through it. Next cost center would be Jackson Street. Again, they have the narrative to describe what, what is going on at their school that, that our local appropriation would be funding, followed by the FTE pages. Again, you'll see notes for any staffing changes. I did find a Scribner's error when I was preparing my presentation for tonight. The first note on the right-hand column, it says eliminate one point oh FTE grade one ESP. For that particular one, that should say teaching position. The ESP is, is noted three lines below, so we're not proposing to eliminate two ESPs there from Jackson. That was, that was a Scribner's error. That first one should say teacher. I apologize for that. I changed it in my budget book, but by the time I found that, it was too late to change all of the books. Here is Jackson Street Special Ed. No proposed changes here. Again, they're pages, they're budget pages, so you can see an increase of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars for academic support interventionist. That's because Bridge, or sorry, Jackson Street's Title One funding has been eliminated, so that had to be absorbed into the local budget. All right, now I'm gonna get to Leeds. Again, we begin with a narrative and then we get to their FTEs. You'll see the Title One funding was eliminated and, or, you know, lost essentially in Leeds as well. And then you'll see the point six FTE reading intervention transfer that we're proposing from JFK. So that's the deviation on FTEs there. No changes in Leeds Special Ed. Just like Jackson Street, you will see a large increase in the interventionist line item because of the, the Title One funding being eliminated. The, we needed to absorb that into the local budget, so that's why that large increase is there. And that's Leeds Special Ed. Moving on to Ryan Road, again, we start with the narrative. The FTE page, you'll see a, you know, a proposal of transferring a point eight FTE from JFK to Ryan Road. So that's the increase there. You'll see the proposed grade one ESP elimination there as well. No changes in Ryan Road Special Ed to note in terms of FTEs. And then you'll see their budget pages as well. Again, I've noted anything involving staffing, proposed staffing changes. All right, moving on to JFK. So you'll see a couple of more notes here than you have in the past couple of, of cost centers. The first one being the two curriculum coaches that are proposed. It's important to note that those proposed curriculum coaches would be funded out of S R three money. They're not being funded out of local budget money as well as the math interventionist that was created this year. It was supposed to be a one-year position, but there, there's, we, we've seen a need, we've heard feedback and we've, we've seen a need to continue that into next year. And I believe Dr. Provost in the first few budget touched upon the, the cultural coach at JFK didn't work out as, as we planned. So there was Semester Two money to continue to fund the additional math interventionist at JFK. You will also see the grade six teacher position proposal to be eliminated. I'd like to speak a, a little bit more to what that's going to look like should this budget proposal pass. Basically, what this would mean is, is they would be switching from a three-team to a two-team model at JFK. It would mean that teachers would teach two subjects. They'd all teach reading and they'd all teach either math, ELA, social studies, or science. So teachers would teach two subjects. Student homerooms will likely be based on their reading classes. Three special education teachers will remain in grade six. One would do push-in and some pull-out services based on the need of each team. And then the two teams each would have a special education teacher attached to them. The impact on class sizes that we are projecting for science and social studies, you know, based on our enrollment projection, right now it'd be a hundred and ninety-seven students in fifth grade. That would be moving up. We believe that science and social studies classes would increase to about twenty-five students per section. ELA and math sections, however, would be a little bit smaller due to students receiving pull-out services for those subjects. So our projection right now is about twenty-two students per section for math and ELA. Each student would have at least two classes with the same teacher, possibly three if the flex block is included. So, so that would be kind of what it would look like from a student's perspective. All right, moving on, you can see also the proposed transfer of the point six FTE to Leeds and point eight FTE to Ryan Road. Those would be your reading interventionists that were talked about during the first view. For special education, the only change here would be to propose to eliminate one FTE ESP from JFK. JFK budget pages, again, I've noted things where you see large changes, such as the addition of the coaches, the maintaining the math interventionist, as well as the reading interventionists moving. One thing I do want to point out as we get to the second page of the JFK budget piece, on the bottom, it says total local appropriation. You see a pretty large decrease there, you know, which certainly would jump out. So I wanted to speak to that. I mean, that, that, it, you know, would have a little bit to do, of, of course, with the positions that we're proposing to eliminate, but the bulk of that is attrition. There have been quite a few JFK staff members, particularly within the special education department, that have left and the staff that, that have replaced them are currently making significantly less money than their predecessors were. So, you know, that number is, is largely attributed to attrition. All right, and that's the JFK special education piece as well. All right, moving on to the high school. Again, we start with the narrative. And then we move on to the FTE pages, any changes that have been made. The first one isn't really a change of a position at all. It was just, for some reason, in last year's proposed budget, there was a project Lead the Way teacher who was budgeted in the math teacher account. I'm not sure why, but over the course of the year, I found out that that individual is actually teaching in Project Lead the Way. So while it looks like we're, you know, proposing to cut a math teacher position, we're not. That was, that, that person was just working in, in Project Lead the Way, which would fall under another account. We, this budget proposal does, you know, we do plan to maintain the points six, seven FTE S R two funded virtual teacher position. That was created new for this year. The plan for next year is to maintain that. Another piece of the, the proposal, you can see the one point oh FTE math position there because it did go to the technology account. However, in our proposal, we do propose to eliminate one FTE from the technology department at the high school. When you get to the special ed page of FTEs, you do see one change proposed to eliminate one point oh FTE ESP from the high school. All right, moving on to the high school's budget page. Again, you'll see any kind of notes that I, you know, put for major changes. We do have a couple of expected retirements at the high school, so that would explain some of the decreases and what we're proposing for, for some of these teachers. Because we, you know, we do project that the, whoever ends up taking their places will, will likely make less than, than they were. Second page of it, you, you could see the high school has more accounts than the elementary schools with larger building. And then you can see the one point oh FTE ESP noted there. All right, moving on to the athletic department now, getting away from the buildings in terms of cost centers. Second, athletic department, like everywhere else, begins with, with a narrative that Mr. Prue, our athletic director, wrote. Kind of gives you an overview of the season, any changes that have been made, accomplishments that have occurred during the course of the year. Then we get to his budget page. You won't see an FTE budget page here like you would in the schools because the, I mean, the, the coaches will be listed separately while some certainly work in our, our district, others don't. So you don't, you don't see a number of FTEs there. They're not considered that. You can see that the local budget proposed increase for athletics is, is not much from, you know, last year. It's only a little over three thousand, or for this year, I should say, it's only a little over three thousand dollars. I'll kind of explain where some of this is coming from on the next page here. This is like a summary page of the F, the proposed athletic budget. The top part is anticipated revenue. You know, some of that is, of course, would be the local budget. Other factors of that would be user fees, gate receipts. Sometimes other districts pay us for various, various things, signing, advertising revenues, use of our revolving, our athletic revolving account, some donations as well. So that's the, the revenue, which does get broken down on another page here. Anticipated expenses as well. You can see most of the coaches are funded locally, but there is some funded out of the revolving fund. The athletic director, of course. The athletic trainer is donated by Cooley Dickinson Hospital. The athletic trainer is donated by Cooley Dickinson Hospital, and we thank them very much for that. But it might seem strange to you that it's listed as both revenue and an expense. It's done that way to show the full cost of the athletic program. While the donation itself is revenue, it's still expense because the the trainer has to be paid. So this is the, you know, breakdown of of other costs as well, which you will see in more detail on the subsequent pages here. We break down the cost by sport. The revenue, projected revenue by sport. And then the coaches as well, which that's where you get their final local budget number from, plus their, what we spend out of the revolving account on coaches. All right, next section is student services, which has a very, very thorough narrative. Partially because a lot happens within that department. And partially because that department includes quite a few, quite a few departments. It includes early childhood, it includes English learner education. It includes family and student engagement coordinator, health services, early childhood, also homeless and foster care students. So there's there's certainly an umbrella department. Hence the the much longer and more thorough narrative. The FTEs for student services are noted here. This is largely, you know, pretty folks that work throughout the district. You're not going to see any building-based people on on this page, and you also won't see any proposed changes here. Their budget pages, you know, the the first part does include building-based special education services. And then it goes on to just include district-wide based student service line items right here, you know, things like postage, supplies, contracted services, things like that, that that would apply to the district rather than one specific building. And then lastly, you get to tuitions, the out-of-district tuitions that we pay. You will notice, you know, a decrease in tuitions that was mentioned during Dr. Provost's first view presentation. And also on the the page prior, you will notice an increase in the cost of transportation as well. As you can imagine, that would be going up due to times. Also, a contracted services increase that was discussed during the first view. Although we are proposing to pay for a lot of that out of S or three money. All right, our next section is maintenance and capital planning. You have a narrative written here about what's going on within that department. No changes on their FTE page. And then the the major changes that you would see in their actual budget pages would deal with the increasing cost of utilities, gas and electricity, as well as organic, the organic pest management transition that that we need to start doing based on the policy that was recently passed. So you will see increases within the central services department to mirror those additional costs. All right, the next section is, it's basically a district-wide section. You'll see two narratives here, you'll see IT and information services, digital literacy. And this year, we added a food service department narrative as well. There was not one in this year's book, but I I'd asked Miss Del Hanada to write one because the food service department has worked miracles throughout the pandemic. And they've done so much to to help keep keep our students fed and fed healthy. And they've just, they've worked so hard to put all those things together in in the summer as well. You know, I I really think that that should be noted in in narrative form of the budget book. So she took the time to to write a narrative about the department and where they're headed. District-wide FTEs, you don't really see any changes here with the exception of the grant coordinator, which is currently vacant, being eliminated. And then, you know, their budget pages, you'll see some notes, software to pay for board docs, which was recently purchased to help facilitate school committee meetings. And then you'll you'll note tuition reimbursement being moved to S or three as well. That was something that was mentioned during the first view. All right, moving on away from our cost centers now to grants and revolving accounts. This is all your non-local budget funding, as I mentioned earlier. Anything we get from grants or revolving accounts, which we can carry from year to year, would be listed here. It starts with a list of grants that we currently have right now as a district. You can see there's quite a few. Followed by a description of each of those grants, there's a little bit of a narrative written up after about all of those grants. And then we move on to the revolving accounts that that we have within the district. Some of them you'll see have no balance at all. Others have relatively large balances depending on what it is. Something such as school choice or transportation is going to have a much larger balance than a gift account would. But that's a repeat page. There's some historical information here about some of the revolving funds, starting with the athletic. You can just see the beginning balances, revenues taken in, what was spent during the course of a year, and then an ending balance. This ends at FY21 because there's no FY22 actuals yet. We won't know that until June 30th. So at the end of last year, $85,000 was in the athletic revolving account. So that's what we began our year with this year. Next is our food service budget, which you will see, I mean, it's broken down into revenue, expected revenue, payroll, and then expenses, which would be supplies and equipment maintenance and and the like. You'll see the gross profit and or loss at the bottom starts to get large here once you get to the actual FY21. And that's because the USDA having meals be free for everybody as as schools reopened during the pandemic. With the increase, you know, with the meals being free, more students eat, and therefore there's more reimbursements from the USDA. So you see a much larger amount of revenue than would have been in prior years. When we get to the end of this year, you're also going to see a large number. However, for FY23, I built this budget based on the assumption that the meals won't be free next year. We don't know, we probably won't know until the early summer. So you have to build the budget, you know, with the assumption that they're not going to be free. So that's why you would see, you know, an expected small loss for FY23 because we would expect less revenue with the meals not being free. But also the the increased cost of supplies and food and the like, that that would be where that comes from. That's just historical balances of the food service revolving account. All right, getting on to the school choice budget now. Dr. Provost spoke at length about the school choice budgets during the first view and and how it's projected that in FY24, we're going to hit a cliff. I'm certain that, you know, that that triggered some questions among committee members as to what school choice money is being spent on. So you can see here, most of it's ESP salaries at the top in the, you know, in the right-hand column. There is 0.33 of an ELL teacher at the high school salary funded out of there. We budget $30,000 for an anticipated shortfall in grant money. And you can only project, let's say, our Title I funding will be for next year. We don't actually know. So we like to budget some money just in case that comes in less than we anticipate. And if it doesn't great, then that grant shortfall money doesn't get spent. There's a couple of employees in health services that are are paid out of school choice or partially paid out of school choice. You'll see special ed tuitions at the bottom, a good chunk of that is funded there. And then lastly, prior year bills. The reason why that's there is because every now and then you'll you'll get a bill or an expense that you didn't know about from the prior year. You'll get it in the next year, and and after the books are closed, you can't pay it out of last year's appropriation. So, you know, we we do allocate a little bit to pay for for that, should that come up. All right, the next page is circuit breaker. You can see what we propose to spend our our circuit breaker or anticipated circuit breaker revenue on for next year. We're expected to get $534,804 of circuit breaker revenue. And all of it is budgeted to go to private school tuition. Historically, you can see the circuit breaker revenue as well. It does bounce around. It's, you know, our projected for this year is a little bit higher than what we got to spend this year, which is good. So that projected revenue for FY22, that 534,000 is what we'll get to spend next year. Medicaid revenues is next. The Medicaid revenues go directly to the city's general fund. But you can see over the course of time, there's been a pretty significant decrease in Medicaid reimbursement that that does go to the city's general fund. Next, this brings us to our bus revolving account or transportation revolving account. Our projected, or sorry, our proposed budget for next year. You know, we estimate that we're, the revenue from bus passes will be about 112,000. We do pay $95,000 of the bus contract out of there, so the local budget doesn't have to to pay for it all. And then there's a couple of smaller expenses. Bus maintenance, however, I did budget more for that because we're not buying a van next year, as was on the original capital plan. But due to the lack of production of electric vehicles that we would use for this, that was taken out. So due to the fact that we're not buying that, I did increase the bus maintenance, you know, because we do anticipate that we might need to spend more on that without having a new vehicle. All right, the next page is our COVID relief funds page, which I know that that, you know, there were several questions about this. So first, I'm going to start by saying that this doesn't break it down between S or one and two in terms of at least what we're going to, our our spending here. I mean, at this point, both grants have been approved and their uses are, you know, primarily for the same thing. So, you know, for instance, dual enrollment, the first item there, I mean, for for my use, it's going to be funded with S or three, but it could just as easily be funded with with S or two. So we've sort of grouped all this together. Some of the, you know, and a lot of this mirrors the the budget, the S or three budget plan that I'd presented once it was approved to the whole committee. But some things I I do want to highlight on here, you will see a $10,000 figure there for restorative practices, professional development. That was something that was mentioned by, I believe, two different members of the school committee after the first view. So we we I did a little bit of of research about what that would cost to provide something that was was more streamlined than what is currently happening among the different buildings. So we came up with a $10,000 figure for that. You will see down a little further, a $19,200 item that says for elementary science curriculum. And what what this is, is mystery science materials. Currently, the elementary schools are purchasing materials for this from different sources. I believe there are six different sources they purchased items from. So last week, our curriculum director Karen Albano approached me and, you know, talked about some mystery science material boxes essentially that can be purchased, you know, from one vendor that does not have to, you know, entail spending money in six different places. And then what we're proposing to do is pay for that with S or three money, which will then free up some elementary building-based budget money to fund the garden educator, you know, program that that was in the first view budget proposed as a potential cut. But based on this, we've found a way to be able to keep that going for FY23. Another change you will see is in my original budget plan, we'd had two interventionists and one instructional coach listed. You'll see here it's one interventionist and two instructional coaches, and that mirrors what is throughout the rest of the budget book. Another thing here, you'll see another proposed expense would be continuing our contract for clinical services for $105,000. Based on feedback we've gotten from JFK and the high school, that's been successful this year. But the feedback also said that there's still a need. So we we do propose to continue that contract for next year. You know, some other things, you know, there's there's stipend money for teachers here to attend professional development. You know, that can include, obviously, the restorative practices, but mindfulness as well, and and, you know, different types of things that educators could use for social, emotional learning purposes within the classroom. So our our total proposed COVID fund spending, COVID relief fund spending for next year is a little bit over $2.2 million. In the bottom right, you'll see that, you know, that would leave us with about 1.8 million left for FY24. And if you recall, the S or three money needs to be spent by September 30th of 2025. So, so anyway, that would leave us that for for FY, I mean, 24, sorry, not 25. So this, that would leave us about 1.8 million dollars for our third year, essentially. Our next section is a lot of DESI and Department of Revenue information. I'm not going to go through every single page of it. It's really chapter 70 funding information, which Dr. Provost detailed very thoroughly during the first view. But in those pages, you'll you'll see what our foundation budget is, you'll see what our required local contribution is, and you'll see the, as I described it earlier today, modest increase of, you know, slightly over $80,000 in chapter 70 funding that North Hampton will get next year. The page I did pause that, though, is our direct special education expenditures over the last, you know, a little more than a decade. So you'll you can see how that increases over over time. There's no data that's more recent than this, it ends at FY20, because I get this right from the DESI website. But it was not worth noting that that's in there as well. This section ends with the cherry sheet, which it basically comes out, you know, when the governor's proposed budget does. And that's where you get your, your, you know, estimates of what you're going to be charged for, say, school choice students going out or charter school students going out, as well as your school choice revenue. You know, your chapter 70 is there too, so. All right, our last section is sort of a catch-all. It's our miscellaneous section that includes, you know, various, I guess I would refer to them as subsections. Starting with enrollment, this is our October 1st enrollment that we, that, you know, came from our SIMS data. So you'll see that the our total student enrollment mirrors what was in the front of the the budget book on that page. It's worth noting here that our current sixth grade class at JFK is historically low. You you know, very small group, only 148 students. Classes are typically around 200 historically. Historically, obviously, some are larger, but this this particular sixth grade is is smaller. You may note also that kindergarten can be relatively small. There's a few reasons for that. One of which would be that kindergarten isn't mandatory. Not every family will send their child to kindergarten. And some will keep their their children in a private setting until first grade. So, you know, you you may see a little bit of of growth as next year goes on in terms of first grade. Alright, then we get into the choice and charter section. This is pretty much going to detail our school choice. You can see the blue is the number of students we receive and the the red is the number that we send to other districts. So our our receiving has declined slightly over the last couple of years. Our sending, you know, it did increase slightly in FY twenty one and, you know, preliminarily, you know, we won't have the final numbers on this till June, but it looks like it's going to decrease slightly from last year. This is charter and choice historical information. You know, this is basically what, you know, the city is charged for sending students out to charter schools as well as out through school choice to other districts. And I I think that this page can answer some of Member Robbins' questions that that she'd asked after the first view budget. I know that she had some questions about students going to charter school. So hopefully this page can can answer some of that for Member Robbins. You'll also see that our our projected school choice revenue is on here as well. So that's kind of how I build the school choice budget for next year. It's you've got to start with the revenue that you project to get. You may notice on here as well that our, you know, per the cherry sheet, what we're going to be assessed for charter school students going out is like seven hundred thousand dollars larger than this year. That that's a large number. Although you'll notice that it's only one additional student, which may make you wonder if it costs seven hundred thousand dollars to send a student to a charter school. The answer would be no. But, you know, there's a little explanation for that. Your, you know, charter school reimbursement for students being sent to them from the state only lasts for three years. So, you know, so basically that the the reimbursement you get from from that drops off over time. If you send more students to charter schools, the city is going to be assessed higher. And if you send fewer students to charter schools, the reimbursement drops off, so you end up paying more either way. That there's, yeah, there's really no way to to win in that setup, so. That's how that page organizes that data. The next page, I I know this is very, very small. I'm not going to spend a ton of time talking about this, but this is the indirect costs that the city charges to the school department. It's, it's basically, whoops, sorry about that. It's basically costs such as there's health insurance, there's retirement, there's workers' compensation, things that you're not going to see in our local budget. But, you know, they they do get, you know, they are a part of the net school spending. So if you take the forty one point seven million that we're proposing to spend total, our local appropriation plus all of the other funding. And then you add an additional, the bottom figure on here is about nine point three million. That would mean that the total, you know, school expenditure, including the city indirects for next year would be fifty one million dollars. So it's important to note that there are other costs that you don't see within our our local budget. This is our proposed capital projects, which you've seen at a at a previous meeting. For FY twenty three, you can see it's the van, the bus replacement has disappeared and it's it's food service equipment. The next page is our summary reports from the end of the year report that I file with D E S I. It's just basically a report of all the spending of of last year. It's kind of a summary report section. I'm not going to go into detail on that here. The next chart is our per pupil expenditure chart for the most recent data available on the D E S I website is FY twenty. You'll see that we're a little over sixteen hundred dollars below the state average. However, we are two hundred seventy dollars per pupil more than we were in FY nineteen. Of course, this data is a couple of years old. It's not a reflection of what's necessarily happening now, but the FY twenty one data won't be available until all of the end of the year reports are audited. You know, D E S I basically approves them all. And that actually hasn't happened for Northampton yet either. I'm still waiting. So, and then the last piece is some just our the D E S I chart of accounts, the function codes. There's a glossary defining various educational terms. And then the last couple of pages are what some educational acronyms mean. And that would bring us to the end of my budget book presentation.
Thanks. Thank you, Nick. Maybe you can grab a, take a breath.
I actually need to stand up and grab my charger if you don't mind.
Okay, go for it. While you do, can I just make one additional capital improvement point? He's not there, so I'm going to do it. That the the capital improvements that you just went over are the the departmental ones. But there's also the ones that fall under, that are about the buildings that fall under central services, which for FY twenty three is nine hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. FY twenty four is one million one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, and it kind of go, you know, it's a five year plan, so it goes down the line. So I just wanted to point out that those those don't include the actual capital improvements that involve the the buildings. Member Seraphy Cox has been waiting a very long time, and her electronic hand has too.
I'm sorry, Member Seraphy Cox.
No, no worries at all. So I really like the the two pie charts that show special education, you know, separated out from the whole budget. For one thing, it's amazing to see that, you know, nearly a third of our budget is spent on special education. And then I I also really like the the pie chart that integrates special education into the total the total budget amounts as well. Of course, depending on how much each position gets paid, that can, as you pointed out with with the staff turnover at JFK, that can make it make the amount of support going to the schools hard to determine. So I'm wondering if it's possible at some point for us to have a graph or a chart like this that shows the breakdown of F T Es by by school and, you know, district, that sort of thing. I recognize that that then wouldn't include, you know, non-personnel costs, but as you pointed out, the vast majority of our costs as a district are personnel costs. So, because I would like to to know, you know, I see that, for instance, Bridge Street gets the the highest amount of the budget once you integrate in special education, but considering how much higher Bridge Street's special education population is. That's, you know, it's not, it's not proportionate. So I would like to see if the F T Es would tell a different story. Or maybe you know that off the top of your head.
You're looking for the special ed E F Ts, basically?
All, yeah, it looks like John might have something to say about this.
I I was just going to say that from my background in special education, I'm familiar with a number of different ways to report this kind of data, and I can create some sample charts to share next time.
Okay, yeah, that would be really helpful. I'm especially thinking about some of the comments made during public comment about like the the historical inequities. And of course, building based budgets is easy to look at because it's just an exact amount of money, but of course, the total support that the district provides to to the four elementary schools is more complicated than that. So, yeah, that would be very, very helpful. I I just want to, I mean, I don't think, Nick, necessarily that you need to answer about this, but I I just wanted to point out that when I was looking at the the acad, sorry, the athletic department budgets, there were a lot of sports where the girls and boys' sports received the same amount of money. And there was one sport where the girls' sport received more money, but there are quite a few sports where the boys' sports were receiving significant amounts of more money. So I really would like to, I mean, I know we have a ti- Title Nine, you know, person who's in charge of ensuring that we're in compliance with Title Nine. I I just want to highlight that for for whoever that that plays that role in the district. Because that, you know, at least from my eyes, you know, looking at it with these numbers, that that really stood out. I think I had some more questions, but I'm I I'm going to email them. Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Member Robbins.
Well, it feels good to have you get muted instead of me for a second. It's usually me going looking for the button. Thank you so much, Nick. That is exhaustive and detailed, and we just got them today. So it's, I was able to look through my binder as you talked us through it. And I just want to tell you that if I were a student getting a binder like this with this information in this order, I'd be very happy. So huge thanks on that. I I still have questions, though, about the charter and the choice piece. And it's specifically around, again, breaking it down into smaller pieces. I would be intrigued to know both now and historically how our sending looks in a breakdown from elementary to middle school to high school and what our receiving is at those levels as well, because it just strikes me, it's an extraordinary amount of money. We get a lot in, send a lot out, and that just would seem like a real focus for us in thinking about what drives people to go out of district and what drives people to come into our district. And I think the other part of my choice question, which I haven't had a chance to really go through this in detail, although I appreciated your page by page, was our expenditures per choice student that exceed what our revenue is. If, I don't even know if there's, if it's possible to put a number on that. But is it, is it something that makes us money, or is it something that we break even on, or is it? Is that just change from year to year? I have spoken to some caregivers who said that they have brought their children to our district because we are really good at assigning special education services, which is great for the kids coming from those sending districts. But if it's additional cost for us that raises our expenditures, it's at least something to be aware of.
Basically, you know, when you receive a school choice student from another district, you get five thousand dollars of reimbursement for that. Students that require more specific special education support, there's a special education increment that gets added to that based on the the level of support that the student may need. And that's calculated on an individual basis for each student. For instance, if they require a one to one E S P, then that increment's going to be much higher than, you know, if if the student is, say, only receiving speech services. Dr. Provost's hand was up. He might have something to add to.
Sure, I I was going to say exactly what you said, and I would also add, it is possible to get upside down in choice. And the way that happens is if you are maintaining classes that you could otherwise close, because it's always cheaper to close a class. And we really make sure that we don't accept. We don't accept kids that force us to maintain positions. So we're only filling empty seats in classes that we're already committed to because we need them based on the the number of local residents we have. So I can, I can, we can provide some more information about what that looks like at each school level, at each grade level, if you want to, to give you more detail about that. But that that is the way that that folks can sometimes get into trouble. For example, you know, there are districts where, you know, nearby, a majority of the students in their schools are choice. And really, they could cut their 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 staff by half if they got rid of those choice students. Many of those those districts are doing that because the only way to continue to survive as a district is to have the choice students. But we are not doing that in our district.
So, yes, I would definitely appreciate knowing what that looks like within the last few years and what the projected is in terms of grade level and school placement. That would be terrific. Thank you very much. Feels a little like Hunger Games.
Member Agna.
I can't find the page right now, but I I was struck by the lower enrollments in the elementary schools than previously there were. But I think there was a page that said the total enrollment for the school school district is around twenty five hundred, which is also quite lower than the usual twenty eight or twenty nine hundred that we had before. So I'm just wondering if you anticipate students coming back. I I wonder if that's partly because of the pandemic. We're all about the pandemic. And then can we anticipate if they are going to come back? What that's going to do to our services and our capacity to serve them?
I can, I I can take a stab at that. So we were steadily building steadily building enrollment up until the pandemic. We weren't up, we weren't up to twenty eight hundred. We were up around twenty seven hundred at the time. We started, I want to say, my history with the district around twenty six hundred, so we'd added about a hundred bit by bit over the course of years. And then we lost a ton of students last year when we closed. We lost a lot of students to private schools, a lot of students to parochial schools that didn't close. I suspect that we will see a number of those students return at high school. Haven't exactly figured out how to project for the return of those students, but fortunately, we're doing enrollment all the time. So I think our enrollment numbers will give us the best sense of that. But I do think that, you know, students in grades K to K to eight that left the district for another option will probably stay with that option, at least until high school, because students have now formed another peer group, and I think parents would be very hesitant to once again disrupt their children's lives.
One other question, though, I think we do keep track at some, in some level of the enrollment in other schools that are students that live in Northampton. Is there a way to do some kind of survey? To find out if what their plans are? I mean, I don't know if they would even answer it, but I wonder if it would be worth finding out, because if people are having to pay private school tuition and schools are opening up in the ways that they were before, perhaps they would think about coming back.
We definitely have information on charter students and other choice students because they all have to report back through the same state financial system. Students who are in private or parochial schools, we do lose track of a little bit, but we could, we could get at least some of them.
Member Goldman.
Thank you. I'm over here crunching numbers. One point, one comment I want to make is that John, have you scheduled, have you spoken with Julie Spencer Robinson about presenting her findings? She is a former former district junior high teacher and a leader of NACE in the past, and she just is, I think, tomorrow receiving her. leader of MACE in the past, and she just is, I think tomorrow, receiving her, something like that, PhD. Where she actually studied North Hampton students and families and, and choice versus, you know, decisions they make to choice into the school. So I'm really looking forward to her presentation. Um, Nick, could you speak to what you meant by expecting retirements? You saying, uh, we expect some retirements. I'm just wondering like what that actually means.
Oh, it's people who've told us that they're retiring. I, I probably expect would have been that, that, that's the wrong language. It's, it's known, I should have said known retirements. I apologize.
Known pending or upcoming.
Yeah.
Just the end of this school year. Great. Okay.
Sometimes even prior to the end of the school year, but mostly at the end of the school year.
Yeah. Um, I appreciated that you spoke a little bit about the, um, sixth grade shuffle with the budget changes, uh, losing a teacher and doing that. And I, I actually would appreciate if you could speak to that again. Could you just explain the impact of, um, removing one teacher from the sixth grades and shifting the teams from two to three, but what that actually means. I, I can go back and watch the tape again, but I'm just wondering if you could just explain that again. And also along the same vein, speak of the impact of the first grade ESPs. And maybe you can't, but maybe John can, just so we can see like how we're still serving those students, um, with the proposed budget.
Well, the, the grade six proposal, that they'd be going down from three teams to two teams. There's currently three teams and then there's three teachers on each, there are three homerooms, I should say, on each team. So they'd be going down to two teams, but there would be four homerooms on each of those teams. So only one homeroom would be collapsed. So this would mean that teachers would, uh, teach two subjects. Each teacher would teach reading. All four teachers on the team would teach reading. And then in addition to that, one would teach ELA, one would teach math, one would teach science, one would teach social studies. Student homerooms would likely be based on their reading classes. Three special ed teachers would remain in grade six. Uh, one would be doing, some, uh, push-in and some pull-out services depending on the need of each team. Um, and then the two teams would, would each have a special ed teacher attached to them. In terms of the impact for class size, uh, based on the projected, um, upcoming class of 197, that would increase science and social studies classes to about 25 students per section. However, ELA and math classes are projected to be a little bit smaller, um, due to students receiving pull-out services for those subjects. So our, our projection right now is 22. Each student will have at least two classes with the same teacher, um, reading and then another subject, um, as well as, um, flex block. So, um, potentially, um, a student could have three classes with one teacher. So that, that's what grade six would look like. In terms of the grade one ESPs, you know, uh, I don't know, Dr. Provost, do you want to speak to the
Sure.
Impact of that?
I, I think I just want to be clear that we are not saying that any of the, um, reductions that we're proposing are impact-free. And we're not saying that about the first grade ESPs either. What we're doing is trying to adjust as responsibly as we can to the landscape that I described in, in my first few budget of reduced federal support for our schools and essentially flat support from the state for our schools. So there is a, there's a, a budget crunch that we're trying to deal with and we're trying to make the reductions in the places where we feel we can do it with the least impact, but it doesn't mean that it's no impact. I can provide some more information about what the class sizes will, will look like, what the staffing will look like, um, at the next level. As I said, there will be additional adults in a number of those classes because a lot, there are a number of students who have one-to-ones, um, associated with them. So it's, but not every first grade class. I'm not saying that. But I, I can share that with you, but I just, I want to be really clear. I'm not saying the reductions have no impact to students. I'm saying we can't, uh, we don't have the funding to continue to provide staffing at the level that we've had, um, in response to COVID, which as Nick showed on that budget, we added many positions, um, due to COVID that actually were above and beyond the budget. And so we're trying to, reduce back to a, a level that can be supported by the budget without the additional infusion of the COVID funds.
Thank you. Um, I was looking through the budget, but then noticing that we're actually, we have more ESPs in the district than we have in past years, that we have prioritized and we really value ESPs. They bring a lot to our spaces. And we know that there's a way because of, what is it, attrition or because of the, the movement of ESPs, that it's a way that we can preserve employees without, so no one's getting, losing their job. We're just having to shuffle and that's a place where that just naturally happens. I also want to point out, I've been crunching enrollment numbers. It's something that, um, I'm, I'm concerned about staff retainment and enrollment numbers, um, because of the way they trend over time, regardless of budget decisions. And I just want to point out something that I'm happy to see is that, looking at the budget books I have available, the, um, total students, that are coming into JFK has been like 203, 214, 207 in the past. And, and right now that's sort of what grade eight and grade seven are at. Grade six right now is at 148. But if you look at the total students, and this is a number that's on our enrollment page in this one, you can look at the total number of students in all of the grades, from K through five, um, and none of them are at 200. In fact, next year's fifth graders going up, is, is bigger than the current group, but, uh, it just goes down from there. And so something I was concerned about was if we're shifting the teams and I'm, I'm not in a position to know how I feel about that, but I do feel better about the fact that we're, we're not going to be, we don't, we don't have projected those big numbers going up to sixth grade. So it's not like, oh, right now they're kind of down, but then they're going to really inflate and we're going to be in a position where it's very difficult to bring money into the budget to open those teams again. Like I was like, I, I get so nervous about bringing things down because it's so, it's so much harder to bring them back up to get that three teams. But it, it seems like enrollment terms, we're not going to be seeing 24 or 25 students in those classes, which is, um, really a limit, I think for myself and many of my colleagues. So that's sort of where I'm at with the, with this right now. And I'll keep crunching. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Seraphie Cox.
Um, just quickly, um, I think Superintendent Provost, um, my question is for you. Could you speak a little bit to the, the special education numbers? I, I had, you know, asked, uh, earlier today for, uh, the special education numbers of the current sixth grade cohort and the, uh, and the incoming sixth grade cohort. Cause of course, number of students in a classroom means one thing, um, when you have, it, I should say, it means different things when you have different numbers of, uh, of, uh, students with special needs.
Superintendent, you're
So the current sixth grade has 33 students on IEPs. The current fifth grade has 58 students on IEPs. Um, that's a very coarse number because the, you know, the needs of students can vary quite a bit, um, while of IEPs. And that is one of the things I was referencing when I said, I have some experience in, uh, depicting loading charts. So I would like to take a little bit more of a fine-grained look at that before just saying, well, it's 33 versus 58. And I can do that before the next meeting.
Yeah, that would be much appreciated. I mean, as, uh, I, I share the concerns of, uh, you know, that, that several members have been raising and of course, members of the public were raising, uh, about this change. And I think especially in terms of, um, both seeing an increase in the size of the cohort as well as a potential increase in the needed special education, or the special education needs of the cohort. So, um, so that, that's, that's where my thinking is going at the moment. So I would really appreciate, um, data around that to, to help me understand if, if that's just an assumption or a reality. Thank you.
Member Stein.
So question for Nick. And you may not have the exact figure off the top of your head, but if you give a ballpark, that'd be great. I'm wondering what additional percentage to the school budget would be necessary to avoid the cuts we've been discussing. I know we're talking about a 4% increase. Do you have a sense of what the percentage increase would be to avoid this? What about 4%?
To avoid any cuts at all?
Specifically around the personnel and the reorganization in sixth grade and first grade and, those are the ones I'm most particularly interested in right now.
Um, I'm going to need to calculate that if you don't mind to get back to you. I just want to make sure I give you a good number.
Sure. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Member Miller. You can unmute? Are you seeing?
I know. Now, I couldn't unmute. So I have a naive question. I have had, uh, because this has been raised by different constituents, I need to understand the difference between academic coaches and what those positions provide. And I know I do understand what an ESP, what the function of an ESP is, and I appreciate those. So I guess I do need to understand that because I too am very concerned about this, um, cut to the sixth grade and I'm just trying to understand alternatives or what other things have been explored because I'm very concerned about it.
First of all, don't think the, the question is naive. I appreciate the question. Second of all, I would say that the two things are not linked. I, I am starting to sense in the public conversation that people feel that we're reducing a teacher in order to pay for coaches. That's not the case. The funding source for the coaches is completely separate. The funding source for coaches is the ESRS funds. So, um, if you told us to eliminate the coaches, it wouldn't create money for the teacher. I just want to make that clear because I, I hear in your question that that might've been something you heard too. But to answer your, your core question directly about what an academic coach is, they are someone who assists the teachers and the principal in, um, the instructional leadership function of the building. We have, uh, principals who are spending a lot of time, and even before COVID, spending a lot of time on management and operations of the building, also on, um, the, the public relations aspect of it, meeting with families, et cetera, and not having a lot of time to provide feedback to teachers on what they see in their classes. I'm not saying principals can't do it. They're doing it, you know, the best they can, and they do do it. But, uh, instructional coaches are staff members who are specifically hired to work with teachers on their instructional practices and provide them feedback on how to improve their education. So, we have two coaches right now, an ELA coach and a math coach, and they are being split among five schools. So they're trying to support the teachers at all of those five schools. It's the four elementaries plus the middle school. And they are, in my opinion, um, now starting to experience the same problems principals have. Because if you think about trying to support all of the teachers in all of those schools, being just one person, um, you're really stretched then. So the proposal was to increase, two coaches so that there were coaches dedicated just to middle school and then let the other coaches be dedicated just to elementary school so that they're able to provide, uh, a more substantial dose of coaching for the, the teachers. I see your camera turned off, so I'm not getting any visi-, um, visual cues. Does, does that, does that make sense?
I'm ha-, I'm, I'm so sorry. I don't know why. I'm unable to start my video and I don't know why.
Well, we can hear you. Did, did that help you to understand what we mean by academic coaches?
That was extremely helpful and I now understand that it's really apples and oranges.
Correct.
Your video is back, by the way.
Yes, thank you.
Member Gazy.
Thank you. If coaches come from a different, from ESRS, why can't ESPs come from ESRS? Because they provide the emotional support, uh, first grade especially. I don't see why, I think we have funded some ESPs with ESRS funds and in this time when so many kids are dysregulated and, uh, struggling academically and emotionally, I think that that is highly able to be charged to ESRS. And I am extremely concerned about, putting our money in non-student facing positions because the, um, that's where the crux of the biscuit is, where, you know, the plow meets the road, whatever the, the simile or metaphor is. I, man, when I was a teacher, give me a good ESP rather than a coach any day. It more, it more impacted my ability to serve kids than anything else. And for me as well, the thought of fifth grade students, and I just know the fifth grade class at Jackson, but it has a high number of kids with emotional needs and, and it's got a large, and that whole fifth grade, as we've seen with the numbers, they have, what is it? 58 out of 197 with ed plans and uh, I am really, really concerned about the loss of, um, positions of student facing positions. And I think it's a mistake.
So you
And I feel that we need to look for, if there's no money in this budget, I would ask the mayor, what can we do about this? I, I mean, this is our future.
If, if I could take the first part of your question, you can, you can, um, fund ESPs from ESRS. Our, our ESRS spending plan does include ESP positions. So that is part of our plan. You know, you could fund more ESPs, but we, you just have to make sure, you'd be a little bit planful about it because any ESPs that you hire with the ESRS have to be gone by the end, essentially the end of next year. Um, because that's when the funding, it, um, ends. Now, we did do that because we thought that there were some students who were experiencing needs now that would lessen over time. And so we thought we could plan to reduce ESPs, but and we can take another look at that, but you have to be careful. You don't want to put, for example, some students you know will have ESP support likely for their entire educational career. You don't want to fund those through ESRS because then you won't have a way to fund them once the ESRS funding runs out.
Well, then what about coaches? You're bringing coaches in on ESRS, so they're gone in a year.
Yes, and
I would rather, in a, in a, in a year that is, you know, we're just moving back to regular school. I'd much rather have an ESP for a year than a coach for a year.
I hear that.
Member Davis.
Thank you. I have one comment and one question. I think I heard a comment about with ESPs that there some students that have one-on-one ESPs and that that may be a help, but my experience has been that that is not at least typically, an ESP that ought to be, this is my perspective, ought to be counted on to also be available to other children that might benefit from an ESP because depending on the child that they're with that might have high needs. If they really have a one-on-one, that might not be an ESP that can step away depending on, on that child. So not to put all the eggs in that ESP basket of that particular person. And the other thing, this may be a nickel and dimey thing, but if we're looking for nickels and dimes, on one of the pages, I think it was towards the end, it mentioned the six pavilions for $400,000. If we're still having that or was that a that's what we had and we're not having it anymore. I can't remember where I saw that.
Sure, sure. I can speak to both those. First, let me start by, by tell, by just advising, please don't apologize for the nickel and diming. One of the business managers who I consider a mentor in this business used to tell me all the time, if you watch your pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves. The, the pavilions are, are being, are planned to be purchased through ESRS funds. So we can take those out, but again, you know, that short-term money that's going to die if you don't spend it on something.
Right.
I will say that I will say it was the number one thing that came out of all the different groups that people wanted to spend ESRS funds on. I will also just take this opportunity to, to share, we're having difficulty figuring out how to do pavilion at Bridge Street because they're so hemmed in with, with property. So I'm not sure how that's going to work. But we felt it was important to put it in there because every stakeholder group we talked to said, we want some outdoor space. But I mean, we, we definitely can amend it. We can, we could use that for something else, but it wasn't, it was a priority at the time.
Member Miller. Member Miller. You can unmute. All right. Annie, can you make sure that member Miller, oh, member Miller is not a co-host, so.
Okay, now I can. I, I couldn't unmute. Okay, so I'd just like to sort of second what member Gazy said in that I would far prefer to have as many ESPs as possible, even if they're only temporary. I feel like if we can, if we can access that funding for ESPs, all the better. Especially if there is no way to avoid eliminating a sixth grade teacher. I would certainly want as many ESPs available as possible. And I think that you can avoid, there are some ESPs that are one-on-one with a, with a student who really depends on having one-on-one all the time. Especially kids on the spectrum with high anxiety disorders. It's very important. But you could avoid those, you know, I just think you could, there's ways to do it. So I would just encourage you to do that.
Member Robbins.
Thanks. I'm really so encouraged to hear my colleagues on the school committee supporting the concept that our, our, I don't know whether it's our mantra or our focus is really on making sure that the kids in the classrooms have enough adults to be able to support them in the way that will help them grow and learn and feel safe. And we've heard from public comment tonight and through a lot of letters from both caretakers and from faculty who are so invested in ensuring their health moving forward. And they're the experts. And I think all we can do is really go back to them and say, if this is what we're hearing them say about where our children are now, then it's really just on us to be able to say we have to find a way to keep what probably aren't even the needs that they really need. And I think, I feel very strongly about the first grade as well. Just seems like a bad idea to be able to say, well, okay, we're just not going to give the support to these children who are a critical age coming into a world that is new for them, that we know is going to have long-term consequences. We heard from one of our letters from a teacher who teaches, I think, fifth grade, who said, this teacher has children who can't read. And you know, and it's just stymied by how to support that. And my question with, to that was, how did they get there? What is it that we needed to do to support those children before they got to a place where we don't know if we will be able to help them long-term? That's a critical place in a child's evolution. And I'm really grateful for all that feedback. I'm grateful for their caring and their compassion and their need for that and, and our colleagues' support on it. And it brings us back down again to this real question about what our priorities are. I still see the cuts that are being suggested by Dr. Provost are coming from in-school costs. And I don't want to pick apart what all the other pieces are. You don't want to be the one to say, well, why are we spending $40,000 on driver's ed? Or this or that, but it would be so helpful to have a larger look at where their administrative costs are, maybe across the district. What do we really absolutely have to have at this point? And that even if we have to assign some costs now to ESRS in order to have that recovery piece, and then we plan thinking forward about what we're going to do in the next year. And we might, as member Stein said, mayor, have to look to the city to say, I know Mayor Narco, it's not so not so recently in the past, offered a 4.5%. And I don't know what a 0.5% difference would make. I don't know what that costs out to, but as I've been in conversation with others, I guess my big focus would be to say, if this isn't a rainy day, what is? At what point do we say that we support children, we support faculty, we keep wonderful teachers in our schools, we don't make them feel so desperate that they're looking elsewhere or they're thinking of leaving for another career because every day is so exhausting and so demanding. Because we can't find the money to keep what really are relatively few number of personnel in, in classes where the children really need them. So I'm appealing to us to think outside the box, to really have a deep and strong conversation about this. It's super helpful to have Nick's breakdown and the the pieces that go into that, but we might need even more as we go through and not to make any decisions based on feeling as though this is the best we can do as opposed to what do we really need to do? And that's, that's my thing for tonight. So thank you.
Dr. Provost, did you want to respond?
I just wanted to respond to a small piece of that because I see Jake and Lila are here tonight. I wanted, I just wanted everyone to know that the driver's ed was a very important priority to the student stakeholder group that we met with, and that's why that, that's in there. You know, we could certainly talk to the students about whether these other needs we're talking about are more important than driver's ed, but they were very clear on what it would mean to their peers if we were able to support driver's ed. And that's, that's why that's in there.
Member Agna.
I think, I, I agree with my colleagues that people facing students are really critical. And I know that, that's a principal, former principal, that was a really critical piece for me, but I also, and I also, I shouldn't say but, and I also understand Dr. Provost's charge in that he understands that there are difficult decisions that are having to be made now and in the future. And I guess I don't think that we're micromanaging, but I do want to make sure that we are being very careful to look to the school leaders and to their relationships with their teachers and their ESPs and making the right decisions for their schools. And I don't know, I'm not speculating on, on that process that's happened in the, in the individual schools that resulted in some of these decisions that are made or offerings that are being made for the cuts, but I, I really having been that principal for a very long time, I do hope that Dr. Provost knows, at least that I feel very strongly that this is something to talk with the school leaders about and, and also know that they should be talking to their teachers and their ESPs about these decisions. And I, I just, I'm a little hesitant to think about going into more detail about what should be saved and what shouldn't at this point. I really hope that there can be more of a process in the schools knowing what the school committee has said tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Goldman.
I'm happy to let member Levy speak, she has another chance.
Let member Levy go first. Okay, member Levy.
I actually, I don't have a whole lot to say because so many of my colleagues have said a lot of what I've been thinking. And so I don't, in the interest of time, I don't want to repeat what folks have said. I just want to voice my support for the student facing positions. I member Agna, what you just said very much resonates in terms of really relying on our, our district leadership to make the decisions that, that are appropriate for the schools. My concern is that the, the narrative that we had was that, especially thinking about the sixth grade, was that this was a decision that was made by the, the school leadership in consultation with the teachers, but it sounds like the teachers are all surprised that, that this was a decision that was, was being made. And so I, I want to honor the, the decisions of the school leaders. And I also just want to make sure that the communication is there and that teachers are also involved in that, in the, in the process. Especially when it comes to the positions that are student facing that very much impact numbers and ratios. So I, I don't want to micromanage. I I do want to trust leadership. I also want to encourage open communication and transparency and voice my, my hope that, that we, you know, I know there's a trade-off. My, my concern though is when we cut programs, it's really hard to get them back. And so I, I want us to be thinking about that as well. And ditto to a lot of what, what so many of my colleagues have said.
Member Goldman.
Thank you. When I'm thinking about this, something that I also really value about our district and that I was saying was important to me is educator retention, that we have so many remarkable educators in our district. And I really want to find a way to to create opportunities for them to stay and to encourage them to do so by providing the support they need in their positions, which I think resonates with a lot of what my colleagues have said. But also when we're looking at the budget, we have to remember it's a very, it's a complicated puzzle. So it's not just so easy to be like, oh, we take this ESRS money and we move it over here. But to think about like, when we're proposing two new coaches, do we need to go out and hire new coaches? And how easy will that be or difficult or are they already within the district? And we actually need to create two coaching positions so that positions that we can't maintain, those employees have a place to go until we're able to move them and fund them in another way in the coming budgets. And it's the same thing with the ESPs. Like if, do we, if we kept the first grade ESPs, would we need to hire, like, would, would someone else have to be hired because they wouldn't be common ESP, you know, but or like if we have this many ESPs in the district, do we also have vacancies? So that actually we would continue to have vacancies for ESPs in some spaces if we were to maintain ESPs in here. And that means you're actually trading off the kind, you're trading off care for this set of students versus these students. And you know, we don't get to talk about who those specific students are and that would be inappropriate at this level. So I think that's sort of the weighted part about trusting the leadership. And that's also where I think it's important to number Levy's point about making sure that there's transparency and communication. When educators are reaching out to me, you know, I'm just wondering like, that's when I reach out to the leadership team and be like, what, explain to me why this is coming to me, actually. So I just wanted to put that out there for the community, that it is a complicated puzzle. And I think it's something that the principals and the teacher leadership and the alt team appreciate. The last thing I just, last two things is, one is, I'm wondering if someone could give a summary of the timeline for this budget process for the community and also for the new members about what, what the next steps are, where we go from here. And the last piece is, please forgive me that I did not mention this earlier, but Nick, I just, I really want to thank you so much for putting this book together. I know it's your first budget book and it looks similar to the past years, but there is so, so much changes from one to the next. And there are so many data points in these books. It's just, I know, but tremendous amount of effort into it and these are gorgeous and I really appreciate it. So thank you to Nick and your team.
Thank you for that. Could I weigh in on the timeline piece? So there is another budget meeting. This actually is not a budget meeting. This is just the, the presentation of the budget book. But we did have a very robust budget discussion this evening. There's a budget meeting scheduled for March 24th. There will be a, an item posted for that meeting to approve the budget. I would say our, our track record on this is about 60-40 in favor of it actually getting passed at that meeting. So hopefully we can improve that batting average a little bit by passing it at, at the next meeting. We'll bring back some suggestions and edits based on feedback you've given us tonight. If it should not pass at that meeting for whatever reason, it needs to pass at the April meeting, which I believe is April 14th. Because by the city charter, we need to have this to the, the city by the 15th. So there are two, there are two more meetings with chances to pass it.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any further hands. I, I want to echo member Goldman's, thanks, Nick. And as someone who's also putting together, starting to put together her first budget and some of these kinds of documents and puzzles, I, I really, I really feel all the work that's in this. So thank you. And I agree, it is very beautifully done. Okay, moving on, on our agenda, we are up to the superintendent's report.
Mayor, if, if you would be open-minded to this, I'm very concerned about Lila. She's been here quite a long time and has to go to school tomorrow. So I would be willing to go out of order. And I'm also concerned about Miriam, who's been patiently waiting for a long time to try to give us a gift. So I'd be willing to go after her as well, if that's okay with you.
I'm absolutely very much okay with that and appreciate you suggesting it. Okay. Hi, Lila. How are you? Wait, I mean, can you, here you go. You should be able to unmute. Welcome. Sorry it's so late. Please give us your student representative report.
No worries at all. Yeah, thank you. I guess first of all about driver's ed, since it has come up. Jake did spearhead that and it is pretty important to the student union that drivers ed be more accessible to high school students. I recently took driver's ed and it was like $700. And that's just not feasible for a lot of families. And it's like getting a car is very important, especially for families that wouldn't be able to afford driver's ed because of like increased job opportunities and stuff like that. So we are pretty passionate about that. So yeah, then I guess on to my report. So as I've like talked about in the past, the student union has been trying to increase communication with the school. And we've done a couple of things in the past few weeks to improve this. The first is that we've reestablished our Hello Hemp column. So that's, Hello Hemp is the weekly school news, school-wide newsletter. And so that's hopefully just so that students understand more what's going on and what student union meetings are because they're open to the public, but we never have anybody from the public come.
And then we've also have finished collecting and organizing the feedback from our outreach efforts on Mentor Monday. And so we've gotten a lot of like data about what students are interested in and like what issues they care about the most in the school from that. So that's been very helpful. And then the standard based grading subcommittee yesterday just had a discussion with Ms. Harrison, who's the associate principal, one of the associate principals about standard based grading, and we got a lot of helpful information about that. And we'll be working with her in the future to try to get some students' questions answered and get some concerns addressed. Yeah, and then I guess just other student union stuff, the anti racism subcommittee, as I believe member Robbins mentioned, will be discussing our proposal for the diversity supplement in the upcoming meeting, which we're very excited about. And also on the agenda there, after this, probably a while after this, there is a vote to form an ad hoc late start subcommittee. And I don't know if this is possible, but if it is, I think it'd be important to the student union to have a student representative, doesn't have to be a student union member, but a student representative on that, because I think students are very passionate about the late start issue and have a lot of feedback that, you know, people that aren't experiencing the late start themselves don't have. So yeah, I don't know if that's possible, but and then I guess in school wide news, the musical is opening on the 17th, which is next week, and spring, spring sports are starting soon, which is very exciting. I think all of it is starting the 14th, and the rest are starting the 21st. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Lila. Does anyone have any questions for Lila? I don't, I don't see any. Oh, no, sorry, member Goldman does.
Lila, I'm just wondering if you have any updates on the wellness subcommittee. That's an issue that I'm often a part of, so I just want to check in on your side of it.
Oh, sorry. Hold on. There you go, Lila.
Thank you. I don't have updates yet. I know that they met with the wellness teachers, but I was not able to attend that meeting, but I can get information to you about that definitely, if you're interested.
Member Daisy.
Thank you, Lila, for that report. I would certainly hope that there is at least one, if not more, students from the high school on your late start committee, because you're the ones that are impacted the most. So I second that suggestion.
Member Agna.
Thank you, Lila, for your report. I wanted to echo what member Gazy said about having students on there. I received a packet of letters from second graders today who told me their concerns about the time that their school starts now, that they're very sleepy and that they're not able to concentrate. So I I know that we're going to find lots of opinions and lots of passion on all sides, but I I absolutely agree that we need to have students involved. Maybe the second graders will be part of it. And the other thing, Lila, I just really appreciate your explaining about driver's ed. I think that's an issue that often is not made aware in our community, that those who have limited funds and really do rely on modes of transportation. So I really appreciate Jake's advocacy for it, and you're explaining it for us to to the public. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I have a fourth grader who'd be happy to tell you her thoughts, member Agna, as well, on what time she has to get up in the morning. Okay, I don't see any further questions for you, Lila. Lila, so thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, Miriam. I'm so sorry to keep you waiting. So that we're, this is new business, so we are, we're jumping around a little bit. So we are moving down to under new business number B. This is a vote to approve a mural project. And, oh, let me unmute you. Miriam Bork is here to talk about it. Can you unmute? There you go.
Hi, my name is Miriam. I live at 17 Hubbard Ave. And I'm a lawyer. I am not an artist. But I am here to share with you just information about a proposal that I'd like to offer to the schools. I'm working with a group of teachers, art teachers from JFK and from the high school, Louie's Martin Deli, Zoe Sasson, Emma Mendoker, Michelle Mallory. I contacted, I contacted them last year to talk about just some of the divisiveness that I had heard about at the schools and just honestly in the community at large. And really was wondering if there was a way that we could involve students maybe in some sort of uplifting, unifying, colorful art in the community. And they were so excited about it. So it was really nice to hear. They also really wanted to work with Kim Carlino, who's a local mural artist, who has done some other work in town and in the area. And Kim was very happy to join us. I would say that she really has, had brought in some really great ideas about how to sort of express issues of identity and culture and to use color and and geometry and all of that expression. She and the other artist that she brought in, Andre Green, both have younger kids and honestly have been, have been on the line and kind of in the meeting until about 20 minutes ago. So I don't have their deep wisdom and sort of creative explanation for their part of what they've been working on. But I can tell you that what Kim has done is brought in Andre and also a team of other artists to do some workshops with students. They've already gotten some feedback from students about their feelings about color and and connection with identity. And they've used that feedback from students to create some really beautiful mural designs. The mockups, I believe, have been distributed already to your committee. And they're just really uplifting, colorful, and really designed to just bring a little joy and also to involve the students in the process. We've had really great support from the principals at both schools, Principal Caldwell and Principal Valencourt at JFK and at the high school. Superintendent Provost has also been supportive. And and I would say that Nick Burnier, in the middle of, oh, my God, that budget, has also been very kind in offering to help us receive funds that will be donated and to sort of facilitate that process so those donations can be tax deductible. We, the budget's about 12.6 thousand. And we have a small grant from NEF. We have some grants from PTOs, and then we have some pledges from individuals. We're about 75% of the way. We need about $4,000 more, which I'm very confident we'll be able to reach. And I think we're all very happy to be able to pay artists for their work and for their creativity and for, you know, bringing all these, you know, sort of aspects of the community together. It's been really amazing to watch them work and to see their process. Because I have no creativity myself, so it's, it's been really, it's been really nice. The workshops, I believe, are going to take place next month if this is approved. And then hopefully, the art can be installed in May. So we're, you know, hopefully, this will come to fruition and I'm happy to take questions. I don't know if I can answer them if they have to do with sort of the artistic part of things, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, the artist had to go. I I worked on a project with Andre Green once, and he's a remarkable artist and human and just has like such a strong spirit and presence and is just, it's, it's such a fabulous project. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any, are there any, I see hearts and thumbs up. Are there any questions? If there are none, is there a motion, please, to approve this project?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's made by member Agna, and I missed who the second was. Someone want to claim it?
I'll claim it.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please, Annie.
Remember Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Absolutely, yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Member Agna?
Yes, with a big thank you.
Member Davis?
Yes, and thank you, Miriam.
Mayor Skira?
Yes.
Member Robbins?
Yes, and I can't wait to see them.
And member Gazy?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Miriam. Again, sorry it's so late, and please give our apologies that artists couldn't stay, but thank you.
No worries. Thank you all so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, there's no one else who, Dr. Provost, right? Yeah, I think the people who were here for the musical, I think, have also left. So let's zip back up to the superintendent's report, please.
Thanks very much. Let me share my screen. Okay. I see that Mr. Gold is still on the call. But I, I'm going to pass on the request for more detailed view of the sixth grade reorganization proposal, because I think Nick has gone over that in detail. And we've discussed it through several rounds of discussion. Just want you to know that I heard that. And I'm not going to be talking about that, because I think it's already been covered. Let me start with an update on the issue of potential special education disproportionality that I began discussing with you last month. As you recall, I reported that our special ident, that on our special education accountability report, we were identified as being potentially at risk for over identifying Hispanic or Latino students as students with communication impairments. We've been digging, doing some digging into that finding to try to see what it means for practice and what we can do to get better. That finding was based on our having 14 out of 496 Hispanic or Latino students identified as students with communication impairments, which is a little bit higher than the number you would expect in the population. As we studied these 14 cases to see if there were any systemic practices that might be causing us to inappropriately identify Hispanic or Latino students as individuals with communication impairments, we found that just over half of them were originally identified in another district. The accountability system makes no distinction between students who are identified by our district or those that were identified somewhere else before moving into our district. If they were members of our district during the accountability period, we're responsible for the identification regardless of which district made it. Nevertheless, I think it's important to share the fact that our at-risk status is based more upon the evaluation practices of other districts, some of which were in other state jurisdictions that might have slightly different definitions for eligibility determinations, rather than the practices of our own special education evaluation teams. Of course, we will continue to examine our practices to ensure that they are as free from bias as possible. But for me, at least, this finding reduces concerns that our staff are inappropriately identifying Hispanic or Latino students in this disability category. Next, I'd like to update you on progress we've made with strategies related to goal three of our district improvement plan. I'll begin with new practices we're implementing to try to retain our educators of color. And I saw Laura Fragamini smiling from ear to ear as the last presenter was speaking about the donation of artwork. I just really want to give her a shout out to that for this work. Good work, Laura. This month, we launched four affinity groups to provide spaces for employees who hold shared identities to come together to feel less isolated and more connected. We hope these supports will sustain the kinds of conversations that can make our schools better workplaces for all our staff and make our district more attractive to candidates of color. The Collaborative for Educational Services is supporting this work by providing, providing facilitators. We have two affinity groups organized along racial identities. So there's an affinity group for BIPOC educators, as well as one for race conscious white educators. We also have affinity groups for individuals with disabilities and LGBTQIA+ staff. And again, Laura has been working on this for more than a year. So thank you, Laura. Next, I'll talk about work we're pursuing under goal three of the district improvement plan to provide opportunities for secondary students to explore individualized pathways aligned with college and career goals. As you know, our application for a healthcare and social assistance innovation pathway was given preliminary approval by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I'm happy to report that the final detailed application has been submitted. I was able to join high school staff for a discussion of the detailed application with DESI. And I just have to say, I was proud of the way our staff represented themselves and represented the ideas for our proposed pathway. We hope to hear from DESI by the end of the year on the status of the program, which would be the second innovation pathway at NHS. This month, we also learned that Project Lead the Way has awarded the high school almost $50,000 to implement biomedical science courses in the Project Lead the Way sequence. Given their direct connection to the healthcare field, these courses would also become a part of the new health innovation pathway. Everything seems to be coming together for the new pathway, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to enroll a cohort of students for the fall.
Dr. Provost, before you go on, I see that Laura Fragamini has her hand raised.
Oh, sure. I'm happy to pause.
Okay, thanks. Hey, Laura, can you unmute? There you go.
Thank you. I just really want to thank you, Dr. Provost, for highlighting it. And but 11 other people are on the organizing committee. These are all volunteer staff members of NPS who have worked for about a year and a half to lift up and bring the programming to light with the strong support of our administrative leadership team. And they are Maritha Wallace, Andrew Samuelson, Jenny Manfredi, Mary Ellen Bradley, Scott Andrew, Allison Spencer Bunch, Dan Littlefield, Andrea Lyden, Joan Cameron, Ed Stone, and myself. I just happened to take the minutes, so I wanted to lift up those amazing NPS educators.
Yes, yes, thank you. I appreciate that. And I think that that my my communications are more around you, around budget, which is what I think, I think of you as the face. But I realize there are other faces. I did not mean to to exclude them.
No, thank you so much. Money is, yes, I do handle money. Thanks.
Okay, so speaking of money, we've also received the DESI Accelerating Mathematics Instruction Grant in the amount of $122,000. This grant will support the adoption of mathematics materials that meet the evidence-based criteria of ed reports and are listed in the DESI curate directory of high-quality instructional materials reviewed by Massachusetts educators. These funds can be used for teacher and student materials, as well as professional development for implementation and ongoing support of high-quality math instruction. We've surveyed all elementary educators to establish priority areas for mathematics instruction, such as engaging materials that provide engaging learning experiences for all students, lessons that are inclusive of all learners, and differentiated and varied assessment methods. Our next step will be to review two programs that meet the ed reports and and curate standards. Those are Bridges in Mathematics and Learn Zillion Illustrative Mathematics. And so we will be field, what they call field testing, those materials this spring, and then making some decisions about how we'd like to use the rest of the grant funds in terms of which which materials you um, in terms of which, which materials you'd like to purchase for the teachers. Uh, as you know, I've been working to communicate our existing policies and protocols for managing situations when students experience microaggressions or racism, sexism, or transphobia in writing and through video. And so if you missed it, uh, episode five, Bullying and Harassment, dropped earlier this week. I checked in just before the meeting. We had a hundred and nineteen views in the past three days, so remember to smash that like button and share it with your friends. In conclusion, um, just prior to the meeting, I got some very positive news that it looks like Major League Baseball and the owners are reaching an agreement. So not only will we have the return of High School Musical, but we'll have the return of, um, Major League Baseball for the spring. But I'll tell you, whatever happens with that negotiation, your home Team Blue Devils is batting a thousand at the Paul J. Andrews Executive Institute, which is the multi-day conference for Massachusetts superintendents and associate superintendents. When I saw the theme for this year's conference was promoting equity, wellness, academic achievement, and a culture of care for all, and saw that the selection committee was specifically seeking proposals on topics such as how we create anti-racist practices in our schools and districts and community, and how we lead and educate our staff to recognize implicit bias and microaggressions in the school, I said, this is the work we've been doing for a long time here. And I challenged our leadership team to develop proposals that would allow us to share the good work we're doing here with colleagues from across the state. We're blessed with school and district leaders who I feel can hold their own on any stage, whether it be at the state level or the national level. And one of my pleasures is to, uh, of my work is to push them to unleash their talents. So in the end, they responded to the call. We submitted four proposals and all four proposals were accepted. The only, uh, problem we faced is that I listed myself as a co-presenter in all four groups and some of them will run concurrently this summer, so I had to back out a couple of the presentations. But on second thought, that really wasn't such a problem because every one of these co-presenters is ready to fly solo and that's part of the growth process, too. It'll also be great to have Tom Chang back on our team for one of these presentations. And I personally look forward to getting to know Tiffany Jewell a little bit better through this process, who will be, uh, co-presenting with me on, on one of these proposals, or one of these, uh, presentations, I should say. So suffice it to say, the Northampton Public Schools will be very well-represented at this year's Executive Institute in front of the superintendents of all districts of the Commonwealth as well as most DESI staffers, including, um, the commissioner himself. And that's my report.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, any questions? Okay, I don't see any. So, moving on, we are down, so we're now back down under new business to item C. Um, vote to approve pre-K fees and, Dr. Provost, back to you.
Sure, and I see that Laura is still on the call, so, um, I may actually just turn it over to her. Because I believe she can give you a much more, um, concise version of this than I can.
Okay, welcome back, Laura.
Thank you, and, and thanks for having me over tonight and you guys are rocking it. Um, so I came, we, I started with the district a couple of years ago and have been, we've been moving through, um, sustainability practices, quality practices, um, preschool partnership, um, which I hope you all know about, which is the deep work that we're doing across the district with public and community-based programs to be aligned and raising the quality of preschool experiences and kindergarten readiness, expanding special education services. But a lot of the sustainability work and budget work is around, we don't have universal preschool and there's not a lot of funding for it. And one of the things the state says is, well, you can charge tuition preschool fees. Um, and so digging in a couple of years ago, we looked, um, back at the fact that we weren't necessarily, some of the places in our preschool fee charts were missing, hours weren't being charged. We, we were able to move through a one-dollar increase, um, that the previous school committee voted in and now have been digging into the equitable application of fees. So where are we in our practice? It isn't a policy I'm asking to shift, but I wanted to raise this in a public way with school committee to say, there's been a practice of not equitably charging fees to all families. So as you saw in my memo, preschool families whose children are found eligible for special education services um, do not pay any fees for those special education services. Special education services at the preschool level can include a half or full day of integrated preschool and/or related services. And that's exactly as it should be. We're not supposed to charge anyone and we don't. However, in past practice, MPS has also not charged preschool families whose children have been found eligible for additional care hours who have been found eligible for special education services for any of their additional care hours that they elect. So if they get a half day of integrated preschool, two-point-five hours, but through the lottery, they got a full day spot, we didn't charge them for those hours, which could result in a family receiving, and it has, thirty hours of free childcare. Um, and yes, education and care. I am completely in the balanced world of education and care, which is what we provide. Um, and that just doesn't feel equitable and it really isn't. Um, it's also not sustainable practice. It's not a responsible way to run the program in my professional opinion. There are many ways that we reduce fees, free and reduced lunch, reduce eliminates fees, the sliding fee scales chart, which was recently approved, um, reviewed and fixed and approved by school committee. Um, and there's always a precedent, too. K through five families whose children have IEPs, they pay for after-school. Um, so I'm just coming to bring this, I'd like to make a shift in the practice and would like your approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Or comments for Laura? Superintendent? Oh, you just muted yourself.
Just to clarify why this is here, um, under one of our policies, any fees need to be approved by school committee. So that's why we're seeking approval tonight.
Thank you for that clarification. Member Stein?
Um, I just wanted to thank Laura for the really well-thought-out and explained, um, rationale. Uh, when I was reading the materials beforehand, I entirely came through what you were trying to express. And oftentimes, that's not the case with what we see, even from stuff that we all produce. So I just wanted to really thank you for that. It was, it was clear reading it that it was a very thoughtful consideration and also, really answered a lot of questions I think folks might have had regarding equity. I thought it was, um, really important how you mentioned that there are these other sliding scales that would be in operation so that students that are in need, that would be entitled to a sort of, um, a sliding scale would still have that option. So, um, thank, thank you for that. It, um, it was very helpful.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions? Member Sarah F. Cox?
Um, I would move to approve the fee structure as presented by Laura Fragamini. Second.
Um, motion is made by member Sarah F. Cox, seconded by member Robbins, I believe. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call please, Annie.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Skiera?
Yes.
Member Robbins?
Yes.
Member Gazy?
Yes.
And member Sarah F. Cox?
Yes.
Okay, thank you again, Laura.
You're very welcome. And I have to just say, money, you've just gone through the budget and money for preschool is desperately needed. I want to invite you all to come and I will ask Superintendent Provost to share it with you on Tuesday, March twenty-second. Um, at 5:00 PM via Zoom, we are hosting an early education and childcare forum with Senators Comerford and Representative Sabodosa during the state budget period. Um, come if you have something to say, like, we need more money. Um, but also come if you'd like to listen to the needs of parents, um, educators, and directors in our area. Um, and a last reminder, wherever I go, I need to say this. We can often forget that, you know, K one, two is one grade each. Please always try to remember that preschool is three grades. Um, we are required to serve all children with disabilities um, who are three-years-old, who are four-year-olds, but every child who turns three after September first. So we handle three grades in preschool. That's my public service announcement. Thank you all very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Laura. Um, okay, next up is D. This is a vote to grant a waiver of the masking policy to allow for an unmasked musical performance at the high school. And, um, member Goldman, uh, were you going to present this?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, this sort of came up, uh, directly to me from some members of the theater community, um, wanting to confirm that uh, the performers for the upcoming performance would be allowed to remove their masks while performing on stage. Um, and I know that you all received, um, Mary Beth O'Connor's letter and we've received some other messages and also, um, the exact same messages were shared on public comment and I strongly support, uh, the performers being allowed to remove their mask for the performance. And, uh, perhaps I will see you there on the Saturday afternoon matinee. I will be there with my family. So, um, I would like to make a motion to grant waiver of masking policy to allow for unmasked musical performance at the high school.
Sir, second?
A second.
Uh, made by member Goldman, seconded by member Davis. Member Levy?
I just have some confusion because my understanding was is sort of second-hand from Director O'Leary that there's already an exception for performers and performances. And so I'm wondering, do we need to have this vote?
Dr. Provost, would you like to explain what you explained to me, which prompted me to focus on the agenda fast?
Sure. Um, that is a city policy. I'm just going to take us back to the, the January, the January meeting. In January, the school committee voted to affirm that the school committee is responsible for setting policy for the district, including all COVID policy that's not superseded by the authority of state or federal law. So, in my opinion, since we don't have a state or federal law that, um, forbids a school district from imposing the mask mandate on the performers, we need an affirmative vote from the committee to undo it at this time, since sort of our last status stay-in-place, um, policy, if you will, is masking everywhere inside the building.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I will be at the Saturday night performance, so unfortunately, won't be able to see you there, member Goldman. A member Stein?
Um, you know what? I'm going to hold the comment. That's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Lucy, are you a performer? Oh, hold on.
I'm the stage manager.
Oh.
Um, I just, I just wanted to say how much it would mean to even me, who I have to be masked the whole time because I'm backstage, but um, our performers have worked so hard and I didn't get a chance to speak in public comment, but they've worked so hard and I know how much they want to do this to the full extent. So it would mean a lot to all the students involved, crew and cast. Thank you.
Thank you for working on it. Okay, if there's no further comments, roll call please, Annie.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Skiera?
Yes.
Member Robbins?
Yes.
Member Gazy?
Yes.
Member Sarah F. Cox?
Yes.
And member Stein?
Yes.
Okay, then we were granted. The show shall go on. Thank you. Um, okay, next up is E. The report from Superintendent Health Advisory Committee and, excuse me, member Goldman.
Thank you. Um, from the last, uh, Shack meetings, um, again, I just want to say that Vivian Franklin provides such excellent, um, presentations at these meetings with very comprehensive data collection and analysis. She's actually speaking directly with the hospital about their experiences with COVID. So I, I just want to assure, uh, the committee and the public that we're not just, you know, bringing up one webpage and looking at one chart. Her, she's really bringing it all in and that's why you can't just come up with a simple metric for making these decisions. Um, and I really appreciate her, her effort and presentations. Um, at this point, we are, still have masks in place. Um, and, uh, the rugs are back and, um, the, uh, we were just talking about a lot of the mitigation pieces that are in place. So we have treatments and vaccinations, testing, the filters continue, um, to be monitored, filters changed, and, um, that's sort of where it's at. The numbers are, are really low. They've been trending low for some time and, as you know, the Board of Health also stated those reasons, um, for why they lifted the mask mandate in indoor spaces in Northampton tonight. So that's my update from Shack.
Thank you. Member Stein, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, you know, it's second, uh, member Goldman's, uh, praise of Vivian. She's, uh, really helpful in dissecting things and asking particular questions of, so I'm particularly grateful to have that opportunity to engage with her. Um, and yeah, it was really interesting to learn about the new metrics from the CDC, how we are trying to square those locally, um, what the limitations are, what the challenges are. Um, and it was actually really good. I got to kind of dig in with her about the vaccination rates in town and really understand where the gaps are in ages and et cetera. It was just, it was very helpful. So, um, no, it's a, it's a useful resource and I'm glad we, we have it and can bring back those things to the, the school committee.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, um, nothing further on that. We will move on to F, which is a vote to direct the superintendent to gather community feedback on masking in schools. And member Agna, you were gonna present on this?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I, um, when I ran for school committee, I was really interested in trying to make, um, information more available to the general public about what's going on in this, on the school committee. I'm not somebody who has figured that out yet, but I am somebody who does have an Instagram account and a Facebook page and I have been posting agendas and information that way and I'm getting some interest in it. And I always welcome other ways that I can be more available to the community and getting the word out. Um, I have received a lot of input from members of our community about their thoughts on the mask mandate. Um, and I have also been listening very carefully to the public comment since I've been a member. And, um, as member Goldman said, there are many metrics out there and many ways that people read the data. I'm certainly a person who is interested in what the data says and what the science says, but I think that we haven't yet come to think that we haven't yet come to total conclusion about anything for, that is definite. Though I'm pleased to hear that the Public Health Department has made a decision, and I'm sure that will be something that we will consider at our meeting on March 24th. I'm sorry that those who wanted us to speak about it and vote on it tonight, we're not going to be doing that. And also, I did speak with the superintendent because I felt that it would be important to get a community read on where people are about mask mandate. It isn't, you know, this is a democracy, so it's representative, and we won't be able to take a vote on it. But I thought, out of respect, especially for the teachers and the ESPs, and those who've been in schools on the front line for the last two years, as of March 13th, that we hear from the community about what their thoughts are on lifting the mask mandate and what that will mean for them and their work. I also think that our community needs to have a voice in speaking about this so that those who have concerns about the option and to wear a mask will feel confident that their kids will be safe in schools to wear a mask and not be teased, or that teachers will feel safe in being able to say, I want to wear a mask, and, and it's something that people aren't going to make fun of. I was really disappointed to see the governor of Florida try to shame some students who were standing behind him with masks on, and I, I doubt that would happen in Northampton schools. But I just think it's really important that if we gather data and people's input about what they're thinking about masks, that we can share that with everyone and say, this is sort of the general feeling, but again, I would really love to hear from the staff in the schools, too. I really hope that they will feel that we have their backs in how this is going to unfold. I don't think it's a simple thing, as some people have suggested. I, and I also think that there's a lot of discourse and/or difference of opinion about whether the masks have had an effect or not. So that is why I called the superintendent and said, I really think before we take the Public Health Department's voice and their decision, we need to, as a school committee, take our responsibility and respect our whole community to hear from them. I'm a process person. I really do believe in hearing from people. I also know that as leaders, formerly as a principal and now as a school committee, we do have to make a decision, and it won't please everyone. There's no way that anybody will be happy, or that everybody will be happy, but hopefully, we will make the right decision for our community on March 24th, I believe is when our agenda item will be. So therefore, that whole preamble, I would like to, let's see, how we said a vote to direct the superintendent to gather community feedback on masking in schools, simply that.
Okay, so that's your motion, yes?
That's my motion.
Excellent. Is there who was the Member Goldman? Oh, sorry, Member Robbins. Excellent, thank you. Motion being seconded, and Member Robbins.
I'm really grateful to have this be something that we're going to explore, and I hope it's the way that we make a lot of our decisions, which is really making sure that we've done our homework before we make a really important decision that impacts families, caretakers, students, teachers, and community, and that everybody understands why we're doing it, and we have a really good rationale for, behind that decision. It's a, it's a passionate decision. It's something people feel very strongly about one way or the other. I know my heart has been broken by listening to caretakers talk about not being able to send their kids to school because they are so afraid of them bringing home this illness that we really don't know enough about. We don't know if there's going to be another wave. And I've also been thinking about it not being a bad idea that we hold off on it a little bit and have this deeper talk because we do live in a five-college valley, and we're about to have spring break, and that's always a challenge when kids come back from being somewhere else and they come back into our community, and as much as we love being in such a vibrant community, it has some side effects as well. So I really welcome the opportunity to be able to hear, most especially from faculty, who, this is their job. They're coming to school. They're going to be with kids. It's not a choice about going out to eat in a restaurant or go to the supermarket, or whether or not going to wear your mask at the car wash. And we need to have a really good feedback from folks, so everybody feels as though their voice was heard, and we're making the most intelligent and wisest decision that we can. So I'm going to back this 1,000%, and I'm just going to add at the very end that looking at footage of Ukrainian children fleeing their homes and getting on buses and getting on crowded trains and sitting in bomb shelters, they have masks on. A lot of them have masks on. I don't know how they're going to keep safe in that setting. I don't know what's going to happen if they're not. But I am so grateful to their caretakers and their parents, or the people who are caring for them, that they have said, this is one thing I can do to keep them safe at this point until we are safe in another place. Thank you.
You, Member Robbins. Member Gazy.
Um, I've also heard a lot, as I'm sure you all have, from constituents, one way or the other. I wanted to know about teachers, so today I emailed a lot of my former coworkers, and one of them said that NACE had already done a survey on the issue. And they sent it to me. So I do have some graphics. If you wanted me to share my screen, that shows you their survey that they took. I think it was 250 or so people. Otherwise, I can summarize it for you. Which would you like?
I'm looking, share screen.
Okay, let me see. I've never done this before, so, uh, share screen. Oh, shoot. Oh, I bet this is it. Maybe this is it. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, that's the first one. This is 253 respondents. Uh, the question was, are you in favor of keeping masks until the end of the year? Almost 60% said no, and 41% said yes. And then there was another one. Let me go back and see if this shows up. Nope, that's not it. Whoa, let me try to share screen again. Uh, where's the other one? Not that one. Hold on. I'm going to my drive. Uh, here's the other one. This one said, asked, when are you in favor of listing the mask mandate? None of them, you know, that's the 40% is the people who, I assume, also didn't want to end, lift it until the end of the year. 17% said April, mid-March was 28, and May was 14%, so.
Member Gazy, we can't see what you're seeing. We just see a white screen. So can you just say those numbers again?
Okay, hold on. Let me see if I now, can you see it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is my first time.
You're doing great.
So, just because this was a constituency that we hadn't much seen, and these are our frontline troops, our essential workers. Many of them that I talked to today said that they have young children who are not yet vaccinated yet, so they will continue to wear masks whether or not we lift the ban. There it is.
You. Do you know how to unshare?
Oh, you have to do that, too. Hold on, let's see. Stop share.
Yes. Thank you. Um, okay, anything else you wanted to add, Member Gazy, or was that, are you saying?
No, I, I just thought that since I happened to have that NACE survey, it was timely to share it.
Okay, thank you. Member Miller.
Um, I just want to say that there've been a lot of comments stating that the school committee is, shouldn't be relying on public opinion, but rather on science. And I think that the point is that, A, there's different ways to interpret data and scientific information, and that we just want to consider all possibilities, including, you know, the people that don't get up for public comment but have other opinions. We'd like to get as much information as we can before making such an important decision. And that's it.
Thank you. Member Davis.
Uh, thank you. I have two things. One is that, like, like other folks are saying, I receive lots of correspondence. Multiple opinions, and I guess what I've really felt is absolutely follow the science and also consider the impact, which is these opinions and the survey piece. But my other question would be, what would the gathering of information look like? How does that happen? And then once it's gathered, how is it looked at and put together? That's kind of a humongo job, I think. And if there's any way I can help, I would want to do that. I didn't know what that process of the survey piece, how does that, what does that look like?
Dr. Provost is the gatherer. Would you like to speak to this?
So I will just say, we need to meet again in 14 days to have this discussion, so it's going to be more along the lines of a dipstick approach than a very extensive survey. I think, given that Member Gazy has just shared that data from the faculty, my message to them would probably be something like, here's a survey that, that's going out to the community. We have seen, you know, that you've already responded to a NACE survey, so, you know, you're welcome to participate in this one as well, but if you feel you've already spoken through the NACE survey, feel free to skip if you want. And then, you know, I will be able to provide you with some rough data on responses from across the district that might be a little bit more inclusive than what you're getting in your emails right now from people who, you know, are motivated enough to take the time to write a statement for and against, and might give you a little bit more information to make your decision.
Okay, Member Stein.
Um, I had a question, I think, for Dr. Provost, and then a friendly amendment for Member Agna. And I was wondering, when I was looking at the survey that Holly shared, how many staff members we have in the various NACE units? I realize I don't even know what the size of the workforce is.
So the, the overall size of the workforce is about 600 employees.
Okay, so we're a bit, well, we're at 2-something, so we're a bit under 50% response rate or so in that survey, roughly. Okay. And then my, my friendly amendment to Member Agna, on the survey, would, would be to sort of include some of what she mentioned earlier in the communication about it, which is, you know, this is one piece of the puzzle that the school committee would be considering, among other factors. I wouldn't want to give the impression that we're holding a straw poll vote or something for the community, and then that's going to be the decisive figure. I would want to set some sort of, make it clear, like, in many of the ways you suggested, Member Agna, what role it might play in the deliberative process. And then I also think it would be good if we could communicate with the community more that the 24th is when we would be making this decision so that they're aware. I mean, I know we probably do, but any ways we can amplify with clarity to the community that we are going to be debating this and deliberating and making a decision about it would be on the 24th. I think that could answer a lot of confusion that could be out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Member Agna, do you want to speak to that amendment, and then you also had your hand raised?
Well, I was going to say, I thought that we could incorporate the data that NACE has done, and I, so that's what Dr. Provost said, so I'm glad we, we can do that, and it possibly will motivate people to increase the numbers of the NACE members to answer if they know that we're going to be listening. You never know. And I also would accept the friendly amendment completely from Member Stein. I think that's a really critical piece to always in surveys is, is to let people know that this is data that we are going to take into account, but it doesn't always, it's not a a poll that we will use and make our decision based on it necessarily, but it is important to us to hear from the public. So thank you, Member Stein. I'm happy to accept that friendly amendment.
Thank you. Annie, do you feel like you have a handle on the motion, or do you want it reiterated more concisely, maybe, or?
Uh, thank you for asking. I would like a little bit more concise reiteration of the friendly amendment, anyway.
Okay, Member Agna, do you want to give it a shot at stating the whole incorporating that piece?
We would like to vote to direct the superintendent to gather community feedback on masking in schools with the provision, or with the preamble, I guess, to the survey that this is going to be one piece of the data that we will use in making our decision, and we will be looking towards other factors, including the Public Health Department's decision. I don't know. Member Stein, you can help me if there's something else you wanted to include in that friendly amendment.
Sure, no. Yeah, I guess there's that second part, and you actually summarized it really well just before this. The way you said that it's, I don't know how you said it exactly, but that it's sort of not a vote that we're going to buy, I, I don't have the right words, but a vote that we're, it's not binding, but that's not the right word. It's you know, this, this poll is to, you know, gather information to the committee to make the decision. It will help us inform our decision, but is not something that is going to directly decide the question. And that's, that's cumbersome, but, um, yeah, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe someone else has a better idea.
Determinative?
I think you just muted yourself, Member Gazy.
I said, is determinative, it wouldn't be determinative of our decision or something like that?
About a piece of information that will be considered? All right, Member Miller, do you, you have a suggestion on this language? Can you not unmute again?
I wasn't actually, I was just pointing that there's two hands raised, that's all.
Yes, no, I see. I see them. Okay. Um, all right, Annie, I'm not sure we helped you a whole lot, but
Oh, I've got the gist of it.
Okay, thank you. Member Seraphy Cox.
Um, yeah, I just, I mean, I'll be voting in favor of this because it's, it's fine to, to get input, like, it's a good idea to get input. I would say that, you know, suggest to the superintendent, when you're putting it together, to ask questions about how it's implemented. Because, at least in my opinion, that actually is the information that I would find the most valuable to get from our community. Yeah, about like what, you know, special needs there might be about how, how it might be implemented, but that's my only point. And I would love to move on because we have 15 minutes until we have to vote to extend the meeting.
I do that. Okay, Member Goldman. Can you not unmute?
I think John wanted to reply to respond to Emily, um, Member Seraphy Cox's comment.
Not, not just, not just to Member Seraphy Cox, but if anyone has questions they'd like me to consider for the survey, please email them to me. I will say that, you know, maybe I'll have to put my disclaimer that I may modify them, I may not use them all, you know, but I, I want to know what types of questions you think should be included in it.
Okay, thank you. Member Goldman.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I am compelled to balance this conversation a little bit as we're talking about these two, and these strong emotions and opinions. And I'm wondering, uh, if there's an appetite to schedule a special meeting for, uh, a vote on the mask mandate before March 24th, which would adjust, uh, the motion that's currently on the table. And so I think it's relevant.
It would probably also make it harder to get this information that we are tasking the superintendent what's trying to get. I would imagine.
It would certainly adjust his tactic.
Yeah. Um, Member Levy, did you want to speak to that question?
Yeah, I would also be in favor of that in part because we have, we're going to have a very full budget conversation on the 24th. And this is going to be a big conversation with a lot of public comment. So I'm in favor of a special meeting potentially next week. I understand that that makes the data collection a little bit harder. But I still think it's, it's, it would be wise of us.
Okay. Um, Member Goldman, did you want to add something? Yeah.
Yeah, I guess with, uh, no other comments from the other members, I would propose a friendly amendment to change the date when we would have this conversation to be sooner than the 24th for, at a special meeting.
A second.
Um, okay, so this is an amendment that's been made and seconded to the motion. Um.
Uh, excuse me, Mayor, um, I heard it as a proposed friendly amendment, so that would be a question to the original maker of the motion. Member Agna.
I'm happy to have that as the friendly amendment. I, I don't know if people are available to have another meeting in between. So I guess that would be the only provision, I would say. But, um, I'm, I'm not going to stand in the way of another meeting if we can figure out a date for it.
Dr. Provost, is this feasible?
Uh, so I would just say that, under our normal rules for a meeting next week, I would be giving you the packet of information in the day that begins an hour and 15 minutes from now. So, uh, we're just going to have to have a lot of grace here, right? You're going to have to know it's going to be a low rate of response. I'm not going to be able to get to every groups. It's not going to be, you know, the best constructed survey. It will be some information and, and you'll get it probably just before the meeting. And if everyone is okay with that, I'm certainly fine with having a meeting next week.
And what date would this meeting be?
I mean, I imagine it would also provide a potential grace period for implementation or, you know, something of that sort. Um, Annie, can you let me know?
Yeah, I mean, all we really have is next Thursday, the 17th. So, uh, so it, you know.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe Mayor, you could take a sample or a straw poll on who would be available for that.
Sure, um, can you raise your hand if you would be available on the 17th? So I'm seeing virtual and, okay, one, two, wait, everyone keeps moving around. Uh, one, uh, Member Miller, is that a hand for guests who'd be available on the 17th? Member Levy, that's a hand, you'd be available on the 17th. Member Agna, same. Member Goldman, Member Davis, Member Gazy, Member Robbins, I see you, yes. I think, so we're up to seven, I believe. I would not be able to be here. So, Member Agna, you'd be running the show. Um, okay, so we would have a quorum, yes? Great. Okay, um, Member Miller, is your hand still up to speak? Or?
Um, only I just wanted to clarify time because that's important to me.
What time would the meeting be?
Oh, um, you know, uh, well, 6:30 is at the earliest.
6:30? Yeah, it's the usual time? Okay, 6:30.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, so are we ready to vote on this motion? Which is now going to be for a meeting, um, next Thursday, March 17th. Roll call, please, Annie.
Member Miller. Yes. Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Skiarra.
Yes.
Member Robbins.
Yes.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
No.
And Member Levy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, good luck trying to gather some information, Dr. Provost. Um, okay, moving on, it, we're up to G, a vote to refer policy section A to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee for Review. And I believe this is on the recommendation of Member Robbins.
Actually, yeah, it's not. Um, I had proposed something very different. So, um, I'm not sure that this is relevant to that. Dr. Provost might want to speak to it.
Okay, Dr. Provost.
Sure, so, um, Member Robbins did request to have a policy from Section A referred, or not even referred, I think, to have worked on in the context of this meeting itself. It was an updated MASC policy, I think it was ACA on bullying and harassment. I will just share, it's my, well, it's our practice that policies get worked on in Subcommittee before they go to the full committee. And I've never seen the committee ever just adopt, straight out of the recommendation from MASC, the policy that, that MASC is putting forward. There's always some tweaking, there's some preamble, there's some alteration that Subcommittee's due to it. And so, um, in keeping with that tradition, I think it would make sense to have this referred back to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee. And because of everything else that's been happening during COVID, we have, uh, other policies within A that should be updated. Um, we were going, we were just about to start a practice of going through the policy manual, section by section, and getting everything up to date. And since this is now on the plate, I, I think would make sense to refer the whole Section A back and then have the Rules and Policy Subcommittee start bringing forward policies to, um, to be updated and approved by the full committee.
So let me just clarify that the policy that I wanted to bring forward, my proposal to have it put on the agenda was a discussion because it was a very interesting update by MASC that included talking about the entire community about harassment and retaliation, which is something that we have been hearing a little bit about recently. And I also think I had suggested that, um, it was worth having a look at. It was a discussion and I realized it probably would be sent to Rules and Policy. But I don't, um, I don't think that we can really talk about sending all A topics from MASC now to Rules and Policy when our committee will actually not meet until next week. And we've had a chance to talk about what our mission is and how we're going to go about it. But thanks.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Um, yeah, I, uh, I'm a little bit now thinking about what, uh, Member Robbins just said. I, I was going to echo what, uh, the superintendent was saying about wanting to work on, um, each section of the policies, um, and, um, and bring them to the committee, as a slate, as it were, for each section. Like, this is what this section now is updated to be. And, uh, I think that, uh, well, uh, also, uh, Member Robbins, the, um, uh, updates from MASC come out periodically. So, um, you know, you'll see more of those, uh, you know, I think they come out usually about once a month. And so I think, uh, especially because we fell so behind during COVID, it, it will be important to look at the policies in a, um, in a holistic way. Um, and I, I mean, I definitely agree that the Rules and Policy Committee has a lot on its plate. And I think that, uh, that to the extent that we can come with, utilize those MASC, um, templates will, will help us, um, move through, um, the, the A section more quickly. So, um, I, I, I support this, this, um, uh, referral. And, uh, I would make a motion to refer Section A to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee. Of course, the Rules and Policy Subcommittee can, like, break it up and, you know, take some priority policies, uh, if they want to. This is just, uh, a motion to allow the Subcommittee to, uh, to work on it.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Levy. Member Goldman, were you going to speak to it? Or were you going to second?
I do have a quick question is, um, the way Member Robbins was talking about it, it sounded like she was referring to the Curriculum Subcommittee. And so I just, I could really use some clarification about what's going on here. My, my proposal was just to have a look at a policy that I think was intriguing and informing. I didn't have a motion to move something. I'm on the Rules and Policy Committee as well. So referring it to the Rules and Policy wouldn't, it's, and I'm totally good with having, would it be my proposal? I wish it had been included in the packet so that folks could have had a look at it. But if you want to go to MASC and have a look at it, I think it was Policy A, I can't remember, A R, A something or other. But it's relatively recent, but the wording that they came up with was really intriguing. And the, um, that's conversation that I think maybe other schools are struggling with and other districts are something we really want to be apprised with. We have a lot to do on the Rules and Policy Committee. And I, I worry that we won't get it done. And it got a slow start last term and we have stuff from all over the map. So, um, I hear what folks are saying and I'm happy to have my proposal, which was to look at this document, refer to the Rules and Policy Committee. But I'm not sure we even need to say that we're going to re- refer all MASC A policies to the Rules and Policy Committee because our job is to review all of the, the documents that, um, are in there at this point. So I'm confused too. Member Goldman.
Dr. Provost.
I can, I can offer some assistance with that. Some, some committees are only able to work on, um, topics that have been delegated to them by the full committee. So to work on Section A or any policies, you need the full committee to send you the policies to work on.
Um, can I interrupt everyone to get a motion to suspend roles, please?
So moved.
Where's the second?
Second.
Pushed, man, seconded, Annie, roll call, suspending roles?
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Do we have a time that we're suspending too, or we're just 15 minutes? Member Agna.
I didn't accept any. I mean, no one proposed any.
Yep, we didn't propose a, until, is it till 11:15?
I didn't, but, uh, I have no cap on the, on it, so.
So we can do a no cap, great. Um, Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Skiarra. Yeah, just mayor, sorry, I didn't hear your apologies. Member Robbins.
Yes.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
No, I would have liked to have seen a time limit.
Uh, Member Stein.
No, I want a time limit too.
Member Levy.
Nope.
And Member Miller.
Hmm, yes.
Okay, three, four, five, six, seven in favor.
Okay, um, I apologize. Who was, was somebody speaking?
I, I just explained the, the, um, authority of the Subcommittee's existing to work on, uh, items that have been referred to them by the full committee.
Right, thank you. Okay, any, any further discussion on this? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Annie.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis. Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Skiarra.
Yes.
Member Robbins.
Abstain.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Abstain.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Abstain.
And Member Goldman.
Yes.
Five, six, seven in favor.
Okay, um, moving on to item H, this is a vote to accept school choice students, and Dr. Provost?
This is an annual vote. Um, if there is no vote, schools are automatically, uh, have to accept school choice students. And schools do not have the authority to prevent students from leaving. As we have explained in the past two budget presentations, there are many employees whose salaries are dependent upon, um, school choice dollars. So I would request a, uh, approval from the school committee to continue participating in school choice so that we can continue to accept students into the program.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by Member Levy, seconded by?
Seconded.
Or Agna. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Annie.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Skiarra.
Yes.
Member Robbins.
Yes.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yeah.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Uh, and Member Agna.
Yes.
Okay, um, that's been approved. Moving on to I, discussion, impossible vote to authorize the superintendent to form an ad hoc late start survey Subcommittee and seek collaboration with members of the Amherst Pelham Regional Public Schools Community. And, Dr. Provost.
So, as will not be the case with the sort of quickie survey we're doing on, on masking, uh, I do think it's important that we do a very thoughtful approach to gathering feedback from the community on start times. We've already had some discussion of that tonight. One of the practices I've developed to, um, launch surveys in the community is to create an ad hoc Subcommittee of stakeholders because I just think it, it helps to minimize the, um, amount of perspectives that might be missed or, you know, questions that might be asked later on of why a question was phrased this way or why a question was, was not asked. In addition, um, we, I personally try as much as I can to, um, be aware of practices that are happening in Amherst. And, um, Superintendent there and I often try to align to the extent possible since the two communities are often compared to each other. When we went to a later start time, Amherst went to a later start time, they have some, um, interest in their community and gathering feedback on how it's happening. And so I think it would be in the benefit of both districts to try to do the survey together because whatever survey instruments we'd launch could be compared to each other. And it would be good to, um, see if we could agree on something that would be appropriate for both districts. So this would be an ad hoc survey, you know, truly, I mean, an ad hoc committee, truly, I can only, you know, commit people within Northampton. But I do know that the Amherst Superintendent has an interest in joining us in this and has indicated that they'd have some committee members who'd be interested in joining in, us in this to really make it a regional survey to the two, two districts in the area that are attempting to do a later start at high school.
Discussion, someone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Um, motion's made by Member Gazy to authorize the superintendent to form this Subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Seraphie Cox. Discussion. Okay, seeing? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please, Annie. You're muted.
Apologies, I did not know I was muted. Uh, Mayor Skiera.
Yes.
Member Robbins.
Yes.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
And Member Davis.
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved. Moving on to J, vote to approve the job description for the EL Hub Educator, and Dr. Provost?
And just to give a little bit of background on this, this is meant to, to address an issue that we have, similar to an issue that came up in lift-off learning, which is when hourly employees apply to work in additional programs, they are basically bound to their hourly rate unless a different job is created that allows them to work for a different rate, which then leads to a situation where we're hiring casual employees at a higher rate than our permanent employees. So the way to resolve that is to create a new posting, a new job description, a new rate. And so this EL Hub Educator position would allow our ESPs to make the higher rate instead of their hourly rate. I did share this job description with NACE, they requested only two jobs, two minor modifications, both of which I'm happy with. I think one probably goes into the policy or the, the job description itself, and the other goes into our practice of filling the position. The one thing they wanted was that instead of saying thirty dollars an hour, it lists the Unit A contractual hourly rate. I imagine that's there because they're, the thinking is if the hourly rate gets changed for some reason, then we wouldn't have to re-change this job description again to come up to the hourly rate. And then the other thing they requested is that we give our staff priority, which we certainly would be amenable to doing. This is done really to solve a problem for our own staff.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Member Goldman, seconded by.
Second.
Member Gazy. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Annie.
Member Robbins.
Yes.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein. Member Stein, you're muted.
Sorry, had trouble unmeeting, yes.
Uh, member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Skiera.
Yes. Okay, that's been approved. And moving on to K, which is the vote to return to in-person School Committee meetings or remain remote. And I'm presenting on this, so last month Governor Baker signed an extension of the COVID-19 measures that allow for remote meeting provisions under the open meeting law. And it, they were set to expire, I think it was April fifteenth, and now it's been extended to July fifteenth. So we could, one could continue remote as, as has been until July fifteenth, when they'll be, who knows what they'll do then or before then. But, uh, so the question is how the School Committee would like to proceed in terms of our own meetings. Member Levy.
I'd like to make a motion to remain remote until the July date, my, fifteen, thank you. My, my reason for that is the incredible public participation that we've seen in our meetings and in our public comment. That was not the case when we were in person. I make that motion.
Okay.
I second it.
Made by Member Levy, seconded by Member Agna. Um, hands went, went down. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Member Davis.
Um. I seem to remember, I may be mixing it up with some other meeting I've been in, but I seem to remember that, wasn't there some discussion of the possibility of a hybrid, which is way easier, I mean, way harder than to set up and coordinate and do, as the teacher who did it, I know that. However, I, I wonder if there's a middle ground, especially if everybody and their brother is back. I think the participation thing is really an important point. Like, I really get that. On the other hand, will it be perceived differently, and maybe that doesn't matter, but maybe it really does? Like, if everybody else is, you know, back in person, but we're not. Um, I don't know, I'm just thinking about, about those pieces of it.
Yes, I was gonna add this, that I know North Hampton Open Media is working on plans for the various rooms that we have public meetings in, including the Community Room at JFK to be able to have a hybrid option. Uh, Member Stein.
Yeah, I want to thank Member Davis for raising that, because that, that's been on my mind as well. You know, on the one hand, I, I think it's difficult for us not to be in person, given some of the changes that we voted for in the schools and, or past committees have. On the other hand, it's a much more participatory experience, and being able to get to hear from so many more of the community that can pop in, I think is really beneficial. And has, I think, from my experience watching this committee over the years, increased participation. So I too wonder if a hybrid is where we land. I don't know when or when it would be ready, but I, I share your sensitivity around it and your, your thoughts as well. I do worry about the perception, for sure.
Okay, member Levy.
Yeah, that's why I made it a part of my motion, that, that I was moving to do this specifically because of the public participation. I'm happy to amend it to say we do it until we have a viable hybrid option in place that would allow for a continued strong public participation.
Okay, and I'm happy to work with North Hampton Open Media to see where they are on that project. Okay, so Annie, do you have, so the motion has now been amended. Remember Levy, say it again. Sorry.
I moved, yeah, I moved to, to continue meeting remotely for the purpose of strong public participation in our meetings until we have a viable hybrid option that would allow for a continued strong public participation.
Second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please, Annie.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yeah.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Skiera.
Yes.
And Member Robbins.
Yes.
Okay, we are moving on to the future business and meeting dates. So those are Rules and Policy Subcommittee, Wednesday, March sixteenth at four PM. We just scheduled next, for a special meeting of School Committee, next Thursday, March seventeenth at six thirty PM. Negotiating Subcommittee, Tuesday, March twenty-second at five PM. Curriculum Subcommittee, Wednesday, March twenty-third, five PM. General School Committee meeting, Thursday, March twenty-fourth, six thirty PM. Curriculum Subcommittee, Wednesday, April thirteenth at five, and School Committee with the Student Advisory Council, Thursday, April fourteenth at six PM. And we are now going to go into executive session. Someone make that.
I can do it. Motion to request to enter executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions to contract negotiations with non-union personnel, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares.
Second.
Which is made and seconded, and we will be adjourning out of the executive session, will be not coming back into this open, public meeting. So we'll be saying goodnight to everyone once we go into executive session. Um, roll call, please.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Skiera.
Yes.
Member Robbins.
Yes.
And Member Gazy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Annie, are you working on moving people?
I am, I guess, Liz from North Hampton Media, I'm gonna get rid of you.
Bye, Liz.
Thank you, bye, Liz.
I'm running to get my charger. I'll be right back.
What else?
Western Mass News, you're going to the waiting room.
I was just.
Are you just removing him? Well, I don't know, I, I'll, I'll keep Liz in the waiting room till she realizes that it's over.